Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the auditorium of the Town Hall Old Sabre Zoning Commission meeting for Monday, April 21st, 2025, 7:00 PM, Town Hall, First Floor Conference Room at 302 Main Street, Old Sabre. Role call this evening is myself, Mark Eldorella Chair. Seated for Jerry Lewis this evening is Casey Costello Hand, John Henry, our Secretary, and regular Commission members Laura Gray and Bob Friedman. We also have our clerk, Joanne Galley, and our CEO Officer, Chris Kotze. And we have seven online?
And Brenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brenda, forgot you. And Brenda, our other alternate is online. We have seven.
Eight.
Eight people online and we have three, four, eleven people in the audience. Minutes from our last meeting, I make a motion to approve our meeting of Monday, March 17th, 2025. Seconded by John Henry. Is there any corrections, additions or deletions? Not hearing any. Move to a vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Did you have, I'm sorry, did you have a?
I moved to accept the minutes as presented.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, we have, there's no correspondence any other than what is for this evening, correct? New business, Fenwick Ice Cream requests for minor modification to a special exception permit to add outdoor seating for five picnic tables as an accessory use to 1,652 square foot food and beverage establishment. 855 Boston Post Road, map 36, lot two, B2 District, pedestrian node. Owner, KAM Realty Agent Rick Fenwick, business owner. Action review modification for possible action. Fenwick, welcome.
Thank you. It's not like a daily stuff, like this guy. But, yeah, so, you know, provided Max is like, you can take a look there. Yeah, so that's a little bit, with some outside seating. I guess we're allowed to, but I'd like to have a few more than that.
Can you just speak up a little bit?
Yeah, I said I would like to. I said I guess I was allowed to have two, but I think I was gonna need a little bit more than that. Would like to have a few more, so we're looking to have five picnic tables outside in that area.
So the five picnic tables equate to your estimation of 20 seats? The way you've written it on the letter that you provided to us, correct?
Yeah.
And how is to accommodate your customers to enjoy their purchases outdoors as what it permits, as well as allowing walk-up?
Right.
Or bicycle arrivals?
What I can tell you, what I noticed from when I was across the street, now that there's sidewalks and this stuff, we have quite a few people that, there's a lot of foot traffic downtown. I mean, if you sit, you know, obviously when it's that busy, you sit out there, you go, and just, you know, and kids and stuff coming and bicycles and stuff, so there's a lot more to it since the sidewalks. It's amazing what I saw change in a two-year time. You know, of foot traffic, which is good. That's why the sidewalks went in, right?
Right.
Right. Do commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
My question stems from the agenda item as written. It's an accessory use to 1,652 square foot food and beverage establishment. In section 53, under outdoor seating, part B, retail establishment. A retail establishment will be permitted to have outdoor seating as an accessory use on the property where the retail business is located. With the purpose of the seating, it's for the consumption of food purchased at retail on the premises, such as ice cream or prepackaged foods not prepped on the premises. A maximum of two tables and eight chairs or two picnic tables are permitted per retail business. I see five. How do we get from the two that are specified as permitted to five picnic tables?
So, the special exception permit that was originally called for this property was done by the property owner. And they completed the improvements to that in 2013 or 14. And at the time, they came to the zoning commission and wanted flexibility for either retail office or restaurant. So this originally started as retail ice cream, but then the applicant said, well, there was a food and beverage establishment permit which would allow for the extra seating and also allow for indoor seating inside so that they could have people with tables, or people sitting at tables in the colder rainy weather and the outdoors. So it started as retail, but they're actually calling themselves a food and beverage establishment, which was consistent with that previous special exception permit. So that would allow them to have the additional outdoor seating as has proposed.
So, beyond the sketch that there were five picnic tables, and then there would not be more than five? Only five?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I have a question. Ballards or heavy planters?
Right.
What's your plan?
I haven't decided what's a new, I think it would be players, because I don't like to look at that way.
Ballards, places, vision to protect the people?
No, I think it says, they're heavy back on.
Heavy planters?
Concrete?
There are any questions? Because there are also in section 53, the record under outdoor seating. After section B, the zoning commission's discretion may permit a business to exceed the permitted number of outdoor seats by no more than 50 feet. In addition to the approved number of outdoor seats allowed as a right, as a special exception. When a minimum, when at a minimum, the business can demonstrate that one parking space is provided for every three outdoor seats, or that there is adequate parking or bicycle, boat, pedestrian traffic in the areas that additional parking spaces are necessary. So it's also at the discretion of the commission?
That's private, that is, that's a lot of traffic now, right, on Boston Post Road, as it is sidewalks.
Currently, you're needing to have 20 indoor seats? What is it?
I think it's 15.
I'll spell it out here, but 15 would be the number. You also made note, there's two others markings on the plan that you gave us. At the back of the picnic tables, there's a dotted line and it says bench plus or minus 80 feet. What's that defining?
I mean, because of the way it looks back there, because that's what I was explaining to me is that you have to keep it natural approach. I thought everything fencing to make the area be a little more pleasurable. There's ratted out streams and stuff that are falling down, but I was told I can, I thought the next
Are you planning to put fencing up at some point? What type of fencing are you? Contemplating?
I have really, whether I was doing, or vital.
Okay. Now, another indication here circled, it's like an indication of 20 feet. Is that?
Yeah, it's 20 by eight.
It's base where the picnic tables are?
Yeah.
Did you cover outdoor speakers?
If there's?
No, I didn't. Oh, there's, opposed to have music indoors? And, I think, that's it, indoor music. As a condition of approval, we would say no outdoor speakers. So the music stays in the building. And then there's a paragraph here that says temporary stick-in-the-ground signs, A-frame signs, and feather flag signs are not permitted or allowed under this permit. Not only are they not permitted or allowed, they're expressly prohibited in our regulation. So it's even more than not allowed. Where you see them, they're prohibited, and zoning enforcement officer will eventually get to having them removed. So, throw up bend your money.
I know, I've gotten the letters over the years to leave.
Don't stand the money on the signs.
But what I can tell you, what's been the game changer about that is that with the internet, it amazes me, the people, they get off the 95th border to come into Old Sabre. I hired a social media girl last year, and I can look at his own, say I was guilty of putting signs around town. And what people don't understand about it is that we start a small business to try to serve the community, and you have no idea what it takes to get people into your store. My son and I opened that ice cream shop because of what we thought that wasn't a good ice cream shop in Old Sabre seven years ago, and that's why we did it. And that business actually lost money for three years, but I was determined to make it go because of my son. And I can tell you this, you know, we stuck it out, but, you know, we're pretty we're pretty much a staple in the community now because of the quality of ice cream we have. But what I had to go through to get there, it was pretty tough. But again, that's all changed now with social media. It's unbelievable how it works. So, that's why the, like, the same thing hasn't, it's kind of vanished.
And the we're drawing as a site, there's a in the landscape island, that's technically off-site in a right-of-way, there's a clothes drop box. That's showing, a clothing donation box?
That's not, no.
That's been reviewed.
It's there, but it's next door.
It's TBR.
The adjoining property.
Yeah, there's one there, but it's not that.
In addition to the CLMP poll that's in the right-of-way, on the property, in the lower right corner of this drawing, it says there's a light. What kind of light is that?
I don't know how to describe it to you, but it's been there since the 70s.
Been there since the 70s?
Yeah, it's been there since the 70s.
Right.
Yeah.
And we have is it an otherwise allowable light under today's regulations?
Pre-existing non-conformity that would not be allowed today.
Yeah.
Pre-existing non-conforming even if previously approved?
Any other?
That's it.
Casey?
Just so I'm clear, so you will have about 20 indoor seats?
No.
Oh, 15, 15. 15, right, okay, so 15 indoor and a max of 20 outdoor. Have about 20 parking spaces?
Yeah, there's 20.
20 parking spaces, okay, so you have one parking space for every two seats, even if everybody's, every single seat's, essentially, more than that. Okay, and you find that typically when people are occupied or in the outdoor area, I assume that means they're not congregating as much at the indoor seats? Because it's nice outside.
Well, you know, I can give you my experience from being across the street for 70 years at Chappie ads, you know?
Yeah.
Having people going to sit in, they come here, want to sit outside.
Right, right.
But that's what we're all about, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, living here, you don't realize that you're a vacation of communities. And it's amazing, we have an ice cream cone, the kids, they go over, they hug it, they kiss it, they take their pictures. Family take their pictures in front of it. It's not a little deal, it's a big deal to people, you know? So, you know, the outside, the outside is pretty important, you know?
Yeah, that's what I really.
And it's just been my experience next door, I think there's plenty of picnic tables over there, you know, and there's people using it.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You have no interviews?
Any other?
Nothing.
Okay, not, not hearing any additional questions. I guess we'll move on to a motion. Bob, do you want to make?
Will you read on the conditions of approval? Would it include?
No outdoor speakers.
Right.
And either ballards or
Heavy planters?
Heavy planters. And maximum of five picnic tables, 20 seats.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Fenwick Ice Cream request for minor modifications to a special exception permit to add outdoor seating for not more than five picnic tables as an accessory use to the food and beverage establishment. And that the picnic tables be separated from the parking area by ballards or other protection. And that there would be no outdoor speakers for any music that may or may not be inside the building.
Is there a second? Seconded by John Henry. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, move to a vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, pass six, five, zero, zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too.
And we should be off to the show.
Good. Moving on to section five, public hearings. A, Whispering Winds, application for site plan appeal for affordable housing development. 830G to construct 12 dwelling units, 21,446 square foot and retain existing 2,453 square foot family dwelling and a 1,274 square foot appliance repair business. At 846 Middlesex Turnpike, assessors map 63, lot five, restricted business B3 district. Applicant is Ontario Olivera, agent is attorney Costella. Our action is to open public hearing decision by May 5th, 2025, or no later than May 6th of 2025. Attorney Costella, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Attorney Costella. And Whispering Winds LLC for the development of a property at 846 Middlesex Turnpike. Tonight, Joe Wren, project architect, Craig Oliver, are also here to discuss the engineering and the architecture for this proposal. This is a property located on the east side of Middlesex Turnpike, 1.25 acres. It's actually in the B3 and partially in the AA1 zone. Founded on the north and east by BNL Construction, and on the south by two residential, residential lease properties. Currently improved with a single-family residence and then a 1,300 square foot retail appliance shop. This is an application under 8-30G for the construction of an additional 12 units. Units will be constructed in two rows of six units, townhouse style. Units are going between 1480 square feet and 1,522 square feet. Two-story. Under 830G, and then in the affordability plan that we provided, four of the units are required to be affordable. So what that means is two of the units will be rented or sold to individuals who make 60% of the median income, and two of the units will be rented or sold to individuals who make 80% of the median income. And using 2,024 figures, which is what we had available at this town of submission, estimated sales prices are $164,000 for the 60% units and $258,000 for the 80% units. And estimated rents are $1,216 for the 16% units and $1,620 for the 80% units. If you're familiar with current market rates, getting rents at 1,200 or 1,600 or prices of 165,000 or 260 are very much below market for new construction, 1,400, 1,500 square foot places and are affordable. Hence, what 830G offers to developers and property owners like Mr. Olivera. And because we submitted under 830G, the commission denies the application or imposes conditions, it then has the burden to demonstrate that the reason for the denial or the conditions imposed are related to a significant public health and safety concern that outweighs that need and the benefits of affordable housing. Joe and Craig will go through in more detail the specifics of the site plan and the buildings. But to bring you up to speed as to where we are in the application flow, we've gone to ARB. And they have a stipulation that requested additional gables be provided on the southern side of the building, closer to the retail appliance repair shop. So that has been completed and shown on the plans that Craig will go through, the ones updated through March 17th. We went to the planning commission, who determined the development consistent with the plan of conservation and development. We've received correspondence from Jeff Jacobson and the fire chief with concerns. We've in part responded, but have open, open action items with both engineering and fire department review, and are still waiting on sign-off from CRAD. So what we're requesting the commission to do is open the public hearing. Hear what we have to say, answer any questions. But we know this will be continued until the next meeting, which I think is on May 5th. So we're not asking for any action tonight, just to present some arguments are out there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe, and I can share my screen and bring up this plan. Move over here, maybe over here. And, where are you going? Yeah, you can do it, yeah, sure. Better. There you go. There you go.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Joe Wren, professional engineer of Indigo, here in town. We've been working on this project for a little while now. Ed went through most of the existing site conditions. Can we expand it all a bit?
Yeah.
Yes. The response on? Can we make it large, full screen, help me?
Oh, I can't do that.
Do you do that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. There we go.
That's better.
Thank you. So just for site orientation purposes, Middlesex Turnpike is here on the left side of the plan, or on the website of the site. Each appliance shop is located here and will remain. It's currently going under a little bit of a renovation, or changing out the windows and so forth in the front of that building. And then the existing single-family home is up in the northwest corner, right at this location, which would also remain. There is another building that's kind of like a garage workshop in the back, over in this demo vicinity. You can kind of see the hatch line on your plans up there. Obviously, that building will be demolished or removed from the site. Adjacent to the south, as Ed had mentioned, there are local residential properties, and then to the east and the north, there's BNL Construction. They're active quarry operation over in that area. There's no public water up here on this side of town, so we have two wells out in the front. These little squares up in this area, that one, and on the other side, those are well houses. They're made to kind of mimic the architecture of the buildings themselves. Greg will show you that momentarily. And that's where the signage, Whispering Winds signage and address, located on the fronts of those those well houses. Inside there will be a drilled well in each one. And each well will serve one of the buildings, one of the new buildings, and then one or two of the existing buildings. So that no well serves more than 25 or more than 24 persons, which is required by public health. In the center of the site, this is not the utility plan, but generally, under this parking area here is where the subject system subject systems will go. There will be one system for each six-unit building, so two systems for that. Beach appliance is on its own separate system already, that existing will remain. And then the existing house has its own existing system, of course, too, but that one will be replaced as part of this project. Awesome. So entering in, right now, there are multiple driveway cuts here. There's one up on the northwest corner here. There's another one kind of in the center, and then there's a driveway curb cut right out in front of each appliance. In front of each appliance, that's essentially going to stay the same. Repaved, and there was a comment exactly, parking spaces there should be striped, they're not currently striped, so we would do that. We would eliminate the northwest curb cut. This is a state highway, so of course we need DOT approval after town approval. But the main curb cut is as shown here in the center of the site. And for the single-family home and the 12 units, everything will be accessed through that, making it central. One, there's plenty of sightline, the road is flat, straight alignment in that area, we have plenty of sightline in both directions. More than what's required by DOT. So building one, each building consists of six units. The building one is the first one that you see on the right-hand side, that's the one that had the gables added on the south side that Ed had mentioned. Since it's the most visible from the road, especially approaching from south to north along, along the roadway. Each building is numbered, or each unit, sorry, each, each unit is numbered, and the shaded ones are the affordable units. And here, we have to kind of designate, with Ed's affordability claim, we kind of have to designate which ones are the affordable. So you can see, units one and four in that first building, the shaded blue ones, and then what would be unit eight and 10, I presume, in the upper building, they're shaded blue. And then the pink shaded one is an adaptable unit, which means that it could be adapted to be handicap accessible. The handicap accessible parking space is right outside of that unit, right there. So it can easily be accessed from that aisle over the sidewalk. If needed, a ramp could be in place of the steps. Accessed from the same orientation. All the units have, well, the front ones, I should say, the front building one, they have a garage, one-car garage, and then they have a parking space in front of the garage. That's true for five of the six units. Right, Craig, we need one on first unit that's not having garages, right?
Yes, and then the other five do have garages, and then we have parking spaces in front of the garage.
The back, the back unit is all accessible by foot. So you would park in this parking lot here, and then come down the sidewalk and access the units that way. All of the units on the backside, to the rear of the units, have a patio, and they also have a privacy screen, screen wall. So you can see along the edges, there's a privacy string wall, just to separate people and conversation and so forth, and you'll have a little bit of sense of privacy. The little backyard areas, some common spaces, back here, we kind of designated this yellow shaded space in the back is common space, which could be a variety of horseshoe pits, you know, whatever it might be, bocce court, whatever it might be. Porch pits, you know, whatever it might be, bachi court, it might be even some type of communal space uh back there in the patient. Um for for zoning, uh as Ed said, we're under eight the eight dash thirty G statute. Uh but the two new buildings do meet all of the applicable yard setbacks uh in the zone. Uh so we're not pushing anything up right up against the property line, they do meet the general setbacks for the area. Um for landscaping, you can see we tried to use some colors uh on the plan, you can see the green shaded trees. Uh we have our street trees and we have other ornamental trees in front of the units. And then we have a perimeter buffer of the Duja. Giant green arbor arbivores all along the southeast, south property line, east property line, and then up along the north property line. Stormwater on the site, of course, will be increasingly impervious, so stormwater is all collected on site. The site has is underlaid by beautiful sand with very very deep groundwater table. So very excellent for infiltration into the soil below and well water re-paved. So we have a in the front of the site by the road, we have a small dry well over in this area. For some of that recharge, but then to the north of building two up in this area. We have a large uh underground infiltration gallery system, which um the majority of the site, probably about ninety percent of the site. Brains all self-contained, nothing goes offsite. Everything is goes to that facility and it holds up to and beyond a hundred year storm. All the water that hits the site again, it's relatively small site, right, it's an eight point four. But everything that hits the site drains to our drainage system, goes to this under um infiltration gallery system. And recharges the groundwater, so a lot of uh low impact development, it's a type of um. Things here with overland flow, uh some reduction of curb collection drainage and then um. Um lighting, uh again, we went through A R B already, so all the the yellow um the yellow shaded. Symbols on the plan are either post lights, of course, if they're on the edges of the parking. Uh or in the islands, along the sidewalks and then the um any any sconce type. Along the front of the garages are also shown in yellow shade. Um there are sconces on building one on the front by the garages and building two on the south side. Um there are covered entryways, so the uh those are sopit lighting, so you don't see any yellow symbols there. Because they're under the sopit, under the the roof of the colored porch. I think that covers most of the site elements. Uh we do again, we have to go to D O T, but they require us to get town local approval first before we can go to them. We we got some preliminary comments from them. And they had some comments on the well, since the wells are close to the state highway, we had to do um provide at least eighty feet of casing on the wells. Uh it's a standard that they have, so we've already incorporated that in the plan. But as far as final D O T approval, that will come after we get um local approval. The, there was also a four dimensions plan, I believe, for lighting that was um part of the package and there's no light trespass anywhere, everything is dark sky compliant. Full cutoff, uh where applicable, the lights are at least five feet from the edge of um the parking. And you know, again, even though it's eight fat thirty G, we tried to stay as close to the zoning rate as possible. All the lights are no more than fourteen feet from the finished grade, flush bases. Uh and at least five feet from the pavement edges, so we have a lot of the the bases covered. Um so with that, I'll turn it over to Craig and I'll let him go through the building, show you, have him show you the buildings and if you have any questions.
Question? Are there existing wells here that are being donated?
Yes, good question. There's a well approximately in this location. If you look close enough on the plan, you'd probably see it somewhere by the cursor there. Uh that serves the appliance shop and the existing house, it's probably on the utility plan. And not on the zoning site plan, but it's somewhere in that location and it's a it's a relatively newer well. And it has a good clean water that doesn't need to be treated and it has an excellent yield as well.
Yeah, for the record, Craig Oliver, uh representing Whispering Winds LLC tonight. Yeah, I I apologize for some people, I guess, had not conceived architectural, so I probably will. I have um a generic set of architectures here. This shows the front of the buildings, which is what I what I probably will show right now. Um what we are doing, as Ed and Joe had mentioned, is we're proposing two new six unit buildings. The existing structure will remain as is and there will be the thirteenth units, therefore we need four of them. Ousing units, which Joe has designated on his site plan. As far as uh the units go, each unit is a townhouse unit. It will have bedrooms on the second floor um over over the first floor. Um except on the A type units, which Joe again showed as adaptable. And also on the ends of building number two, um which will have cape style homes. With a master bedroom on the first floor. We're proposing five units with garage, garages um. And four of the units will be interior units, that will be these four. And then the three that have master bedrooms on the first floor would be the cape style units. Uh each of the units, as Ed had mentioned, is fourteen hundred to fifteen hundred and fifty square feet or so. Master bedroom downstairs is fifteen hundred and something, the garage units are uh fifteen, a little over fifteen hundred. And the uh center units are fourteen hundred and twenty-two square feet. Um the exterior material will be a vinyl siding. It will be all vinyl trim, it will be asphalt roof shingles, which we are proposing right now. Um as far as A R V goes, and their comments were. They wanted gables added towards the beach. Um commercial style building. Which is also on the site, which I'll show you in a second. Well, what we did is we added these gables on the front, on the backs of building number one. Um you see there the privacy fences that that we have between separating the yards and things. There will be step downs to patios that exist on each of the units. There will be a vinyl solid fence across the rear of that building, separating it from the beach and from um. From units themselves. Uh as far as the exterior lighting, everything has gone through A R B, it's all dark sky compliant, which Joe had mentioned. Dark sky friendly, um we propose to have um. Post lanterns on the exterior as as far as um. The sovet lighting, we we will be under every entranceway. So that therefore it's all washing down on the front entrance doors and again will be dark sky friendly. As far as the units go. We have a two hour division well between each unit, that makes these. Single family attached dwelling units, so there's a two hour fire assembly between each of these units. Uh again, that's to escape um different requirements as far as the sprinkler systems go. As far as everything goes, we are now dividing this building into six segments. Um therefore each stands alone as a single family attached dwelling unit. As far as the pump house goes. This is what's flagging the entrances on the on the um on the site. This will have a stone veneer down on the rainscoting down below. It will also have cedar impression vinyl siding and vinyl trim above asphalt shingles to match the existing structures that we're proposing. Um and then a cupola on the on the top of each pump house. That will be flagging both sides of the entranceway and our signage will be mounted on the buildings. On the pump houses. This is the new beach building. Um what we're proposing is the stone up to a veneer, uh a stone veneer up to the wainscotes. Uh height of four feet um and a stone ledger on the top and then siding up above. And then trim across the the um existing roof that that currently exists there now. Uh we have side posts and pillars, everything will be vinyl, all of the windows are vinyl clad. Uh and I believe Tony is putting in uh the windows as we speak. So I think that a lot of the renovation has been done there. That's um, that's my presentation. Um if there's any questions or whatever, and again, I apologize for you not getting. Somebody who didn't want to, did not receive your architecturals.
I think that's it. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Mr. Shurs, your questions?
I have a question regarding the uh the arrow that splits to three at the end where. It's referring to a proposed back stairs pervious patio or or deck. As determined by owner and a screening wall. Um one question is. If there are stairs, then there is no patio or?
No, the stairs go from the first floor, depending on the grade issues. Um we're we're stepping down to a surface patio. So those will be payers or whatever um is elected to be put down there as a as a finish. It will not be decks.
Well, no, I think it's not structured as decks. What the the reason that's it's a little bit open ended um. In in the past. Condos um. When people want to do renovations to condos twenty years from now. They have to come back to the zoning commission for um permission to convert a patio to a deck, for example. So the way we structured this. Plan is that it can either be a patio or a deck. And that's all baked into the coverage calculation.
Right, so if it were a patio sits on the ground and the edge of the blocks is the edge of the patio.
Yes.
If the deck is to sit on the same square footage of ground, then the walking surface of the deck. Is the limit of the dimensions of the deck if it coincides with the same limit of the patio. If you were to hang railings on the outside of the walking surface, then the deck is bigger than the patio. So we'll stipulate that the deck will be no bigger than the dimensions for the patio shown here.
That's the invention.
The width of the stairs, there there are no stairs shown on any of these.
Yeah, they're there. They're close to the building.
What's the width of this?
Only like two, only like two seater.
Yeah, pointed out on the. Nine inch minimum.
How wide are the stairs?
How wide?
They have a slider now?
Yeah.
Six feet wide probably, because there's a sliding door, so usually they're six feet wide and then. Maybe eleven or twelve inches each.
If this is one and twenty, it's tough to scale, but it didn't look like it was quite three feet wide.
Uh no, they are. Um I could I could see them. When you see, if you look up at the.
Just gotta meet the building code for stairs.
Yes, yeah. Then you're gonna zoom in on it, you'll see it out there. You can see here, they're they're pretty wide. It it this is this is two stairs here, this.
Yeah, and that deck is shown as ten by ten, I believe. Or the patio is shown as ten by ten, so.
So part of the stairs are out open to the sky and part of them are under the eve.
Correct.
And the snow, the snow then that falls off the roof falls on the stairs.
That's correct.
Okay. In this um. Chated area, uh there the the golden area to the right of the building.
Yes.
What does the yellow golden color refer to?
It's common area, you know, proposed common area for the condominium.
Right, and it what what kind of a that grass or what kind of a surface?
Grass.
Grass, okay.
Correct. Just trying to think ahead of. Um you know, that where residents can migrate. But to the east of here is B and L's quarry with the big large lake, the the quarry pond back there. Um so there are two benches there, they're called out on the plan in that grass area. And they overlook, they look to the east, so they overlook that pond in the distance from them.
For the zoning enforcement officer, the plans show the Connecticut River Gateway Conservation Zone. On the right or eastern side of the property or is that? It doesn't coincide with our town zoning map at that location, that just because the map is such a different scale?
I'm assuming it's because it's a different scale, yes.
The town zoning map doesn't show the Connecticut River Gateway Conservation Zone in the B three district. So I just will check on that. The width of the um entrance drive for the uh residential uses at the curb line, not the property line.
Uh the throat is twenty-four feet and I believe that Ed is in on that. Yeah. It depends on what those uh return radius are, so trucks could turn in and out on the asphalt. When Ed zooms in, I'll tell you what those are.
I have, because in uh. Section sixty-two point two point five vehicular access drive for uh. Apron width, that's part F. The access drive in commercial or industrial districts will not be more than thirty feet at the right of way. And fifty-five feet at the curb line. This appears to my scale to be more than fifty-five feet at the curb line.
So we're twenty-four width and then you add the twenty for that radius. So that's forty-four and then fifteen for the other radius, so it would be fifty-nine feet at the curb line. That's most likely what D O T would require to get trucks in and out. And fire trucks.
It would change the radius slightly if it were limited to fifty-five feet instead of what's shown here.
Yeah, the south one, the south one is less critical than the north one, you can see the the blue dash lines on there and the wheel paths for the. Garbage truck, so the south radius, again, we don't have to meet that zoning regulation, right? But um in the interest of meeting as much as we can, um that fifteen could be probably changed to an eleven and it would meet the fifty-five. We only need fourteen plus, we have fifty-nine and you have maximum fifty-five. We also need to run templates for the largest fire truck, so. If the largest fire truck requires more than fifty-five feet. I think you would prefer that versus clients with the regs. And so we'll 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 come back to you on that.
When you're back on a fifty, you'll have that detail figured out?
Yes. Yeah, we're working with a a code consultant right now as far as um all those items, our safety items.
So the blue lines are. Where trash truck is gonna go, this one trash?
Those are the various wheel paths for a a trash truck to access and burn exit the site, yes.
There's only one one trash container. Turned in the middle of the buildings.
Correct. So full trash enclosure, three sided with the gates in the front.
I was curious to know what you're doing with unit thirteen, the currently residential house and also the um repair shop.
Uh so the repair shop is going to stay as beach appliance for the time being, yes, correct. Um the single family house is will remain a single family house, but it will be one of the units of Whispering Winds. That's why it's like thirteen to twelve units plus that one. Or required by eight thirty G to have at least thirty percent of porzles, so thirty percent times thirteen is three point nine or rounded to four units.
Just quickly, maybe I missed it, the areas that are neither asphalt nor called out as specific landscaped areas, those will be grass. Is that?
Yes, there will be some sort of landscaping, yes.
Okay.
Generally lawn, um the cross hatch um. On the site plan, that you see the specifically called out areas, as you mentioned, those probably be moles like where the trees. On the site plan, that you see the specifically called out areas, as you mentioned, those probably be mulch, like where the trees are and so forth, mulch, flowers. Annual burning or something like that.
Okay. And for the retaining wall that's proposed, again, maybe I just missed it, but what is the top of wall and bottom of wall?
Uh, it's fairly shallow. I think we have that on here. It might be on the, the next plan, the grading plan. The site plan after the zoning plan is utility and the grading plan and credit break them up. There's a lot going on, especially when you're supposed to hold all the utilities on there.
Yes.
Um, this, this plan has the grading and the building. I'm just zooming in, so my. Old eyes, I see the numbers.
It looks like it's like in the, it's on the top.
And the.
Yeah, it's like three or four feet if I recall, but these numbers will tell us. Yeah, there's a, yeah, forty-six and fifty. Yeah, your eyes are better than.
It's just closer.
Yeah, that's the maximum. So at that point, you know, the maximum will port the, it um, tears down to. Uh, two and a half feet maybe.
Okay. And last question, uh, the. The fire department's comments, have we been able to address those?
We just got those, I think, last Thursday, uh, maybe Wednesday and then town hall closes on Friday. So like I just said a few minutes ago, we have, we're working with a fire code consultant. On that, these are um. We'll get into the details at the next meeting, but this um. The way this is, and Craig described it, is that these are townhomes. So they're like single family homes connected. They're not like apartment buildings where you have one on top of the other and so forth. So if a bottom one burns, it burns the next one above it as well. Here, they're all. The way it's explained to me is it's like a single family home just connected to other single family. So you have the two hour fire rating between.
Okay, so they're fire rated. And so does that make a difference in terms of apparatus access?
It makes a difference on what code applies.
Okay.
And what things are required and what things aren't required.
Okay.
So we're, that's why we brought the code consultant in to go through those specific codes and tell us what we have to do and what we don't.
Okay.
Or what code applies or what.
Have you reached out to the fire marshal?
We'll reach out to the fire marshal. Well, we're gonna reach out to the fire chief because he provided comments. We s- we suspect with fire marshal, probably didn't have many comments because the code doesn't apply. Because it's essentially a single family residential, but we, we plan to meet with them, but. Next week if we can.
So, so before our May fifth meeting. You intend to meet with both parties and have.
Of course, have revised plans and have met with both parties.
And have that, okay, because. Joe Johnson's uh, letter that he sent all of us obviously has to do with public health and safety.
Understood.
And that's a, that's a concern. So that's.
A lot, a lot of those comments apply to if these weren't single family attached townhomes. Um, so that's what we're starting to iron out.
But you also have a water question that you raised too that you need to discuss.
And we have some responses for that.
I'm sure you do. We just wanna have that information.
We talked about it today, um. And we're gonna work more with our code consultant, then we're gonna set up a meeting with Joe, go through what is accept acceptable and what is not. We all want safe projects, so.
Sure.
And we'll make sure that we can follow.
And then you, you have not yet uh, res. Had the time, I believe, to respond to. Uh, Mr. Jacobson's latest.
So we did, and well, is there, is there a newer one?
No, it was received last week, so I'd like them to apologize. That was the original five page.
It's a little harder than April, there uh, Mr. Jacobson's is March twenty-eighth.
Yeah, we responded April eleven of that.
April eleven.
Yeah.
There's no other responses from.
No, we didn't have revised plans till last week, so we couldn't.
So we, excuse me for asking you, which will be asking Mr. Jacobson.
Oh, no, we did go last Friday. We submitted eighteen more copies of all the points, yeah, in response to that. So that's now ten days or something since I've replied.
Uh, I didn't see. On the, on the plan. Sheet one, uh, snow. Where the snow removal will be placed. I couldn't find it. If it's there, can you help me?
Usually we uh. Usually we show that, but they also wanted to be. A little clearer. This is the site plan. The zoning site plan? Yeah, that's. Yeah, we, we could, we could add that, obviously, it can be around the perimeter of the parking lot. Um, where it makes most sense. Usually we shade those in like a blue dot and we can do that for you to. So you can easily, you know. Pick those areas.
I didn't, I also didn't see any uh, wayfinder signs on property after the entrances. Is there? Going to be?
Uh, we weren't really planning on any. We have the mailbox, which are obvious, where you go in, there are, there is the address on the entrance sign, and once you get in there, the units will have their numbers on them. Like say, one to six and seven to twelve. Pretty, pretty straightforward.
And uh, Public Health hasn't issued an approval just yet.
Public Health gave us a review. They just had some very minor comments. Again, we submitted that ten days ago and obviously vacation week last week and so forth. Um, we're awaiting the final approval. We should have that this week.
Do you also uh, plan on providing a parking table?
It's on it.
It is?
It's at the bottom of the zoning table. Last line. Thirty required, thirty-four provided.
Oh, I was looking for separate block, huh?
No gate. Yeah, no gate. It's the last line of the table and then I think no gate um. Explains it all.
Any other questions? On the uh, parking surface. In the northwest corner of the lot, there's a long landscape island that runs north and south along seven parking spaces, close to the existing house. Why is that not continued to connect to the other landscaped areas since? There is not enough space for any vehicle to travel.
We're allowing water, water runoff to flow through um.
Better skateboarding?
What's that?
Better skateboarding around the.
We'll watch you. You can do your.
Why is the landscaping not connected to the other landscaping?
Uh, because then we would need more catch basins. Uh, we're trying to. Break that overland flow. Um, doesn't really warrant additional catch basins there. We have, you have to have a certain separating distance to uh, from any septic system component. To uh, any drainage system component, so this allows a break in the curb line for the water to, yeah, from one side.
Through through the gap.
Correct. Yep, um, just like behind Liv's oyster bar, you'll see that a lot over there. It's one place that I've seen similar, so.
DC, did you have a question?
Yeah, was any, I, I know the four. Spaces in front of the repair shop that back out onto Route one fifty-four are pre-existing non-conforming, but now that we're adding more. Traffic onto the site, was any considerate, so. I understand those will be coming in and out of a different driveway, but in close vicinity to those four spaces. So was any consideration given to any other options to address? Or sort of remediate that issue or could it be?
It's more of a DOT issue and their preliminary review, they only.
He just commented.
They only asked us to strike them.
Okay.
Uh, to strike the spaces that was a really, just because it's an exist, pre-existing grandfather condition.
Correct, okay.
It's not ideal, but if we combine those somehow with the other spaces, it would be too far. To walk in between, it just wouldn't be convenient. There's really no, there are really no customers that go there. That's really just their office. Um, so there's really no public that go there. People that go there are working there and they, they understand how to get in and out. Per se, and they're not to be used really by anybody else. That. That's for the total that we need on site, but it's people who live in the units aren't gonna put there.
Okay. And I noticed that the, there are two spaces, um, one adjacent to. I guess it's the, the single space to the west, sort of west end of the parking.
Uh, in front of unit one?
In front of unit one, yes. And then the other, where there are the two spaces across the way, both of those encroaching, or there's one on each side that kind of encroaches into the front landscaped area, which. I understand you don't have to comply with all the zoning regulations, but I'm just wondering if that, the proximity to. The road and the entrance presents any issues or if those, I mean, it like, it looks like those two on the north side could just be shifted a little bit or not much.
We could probably slide those. We could probably slide those over, but. Yeah, we could slide the ones to the north. The one on the south side in front of unit one, I think, if we slid that over, I think that would affect the entryway, right?
It would, yes.
Okay.
Unless we moved the road, you know, immediate non-conforming.
But so we can look at the sliding ones on the north side, but not the one on the south side. The, the upgraded uh, street landscaping there, even though, again, we're not required to do, but the trees and the landscaping, it'll. Present much nicer than both of them.
Good question, um, on the uh, and. Exit. You will have a stop bar?
Yep, that's showing.
Okay, will you have a, will you have a stop sign there?
Yep, the DOT were required right away, post thirty and stop sign, that's on there. Uh, right, where Ed's showing in that, the dark line is the stop bar and then the, the painted center line too that goes down.
So I just have a number of questions. So to clarify. Building number one is ownership. No garages?
No, building number one has uh, five garages.
Yeah, so which, which build are the? Owner and rental units all in?
No, it, it's, it's, it's really undefined as to what's owner versus rental. I think ideally they'd all be rental. Um, that's what the plan is, but if that doesn't work economically, then he wants to reserve the right to sell some units. So whether they're owned or rented isn't defined at this point, but we left the option for both in the affordability plan.
So if there's owner occupied. You'll have an equal distribution of owner occupied or I'd say ownership affordable? Right? Versus rental?
Right now, it's proposed that there's two affordables in each of the six u- units.
Okay.
And my understanding is if any are sold, it would be a block that's sold. Like, for example, the six units in the rear without the garages. I think would be the ones that would be sold. Um, and so that would provide an equal allocation of. Rented versus sold. Um, but I'm not sure that's something that you can do from a zoning perspective. It probably don't work out if, if, if there is.
I guess I'm just asking about the, the sizes, you know, of the units. So for example, you've got four affordable units.
Yep.
And out of those four. Only one of them has a garage amenity. Out of the four. You do have one, only, there's only two unit A's.
And one is affordable.
And there's no accessible units for a fourth. So you have units that are adaptable. Or one unit that's. Adaptable for handicapped access, but no handicapped access for, or accessible access for the affordable. So that's correct? I'm just trying to get some clarification.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if we're only required to have one adaptable unit, it doesn't need to be an affordable unit. And we have three units with first floor masters, one of those is affordable. So that's arguably more than we need to do. Um, so we tried to, we tried to come up with a mix that we believed was equitable. One garage, one first floor. And then, and then uh, two in the rear.
So the common, common area, is that only for ownership or is that for ownership and rental?
That's for ownership and rental.
And you've retained a Marco? Or at this point to do your management?
Not officially, but I.
We still have to go through the affordability documents. I'm just trying to.
Yep.
Get some of these questions answered. Ahead of time.
Indeed. Affordable units at the sixty and eighty percent would be distributed evenly across the two different sized dwelling units? Or would they all be in the smaller dwelling units?
Let me see.
Because the, the plan says, I would say for both of these buildings, six units with all two bedroom units, twelve bedrooms total. Says, says that for both.
Yes.
And yet, one of the, one of the buildings with six units has the, the inside. Four units are, are smaller than any of the. The six on the other building, so.
Sure.
Just wanna make sure that those four aren't all of the affordable units being the smaller.
No, right now we have two, two units that have fourteen hundred and eighty-two square feet. One of those is affordable.
Right.
We have units that are fifteen twenty-two. Uh, square feet. One of those is affordable. And then we have units that are fifteen oh eight square feet. Two of those are affordable.
Okay.
So again, we, we, we try to vary them across the different types.
So for the units without garages, what do they do for storage?
There's a basement.
They all have basements.
Yeah.
Another question. Why wouldn't the adaptable unit have a garage? Wouldn't that make sense? As opposed to making the person.
Well, it's hard because the, the ones with the, I'll, I'll, I'll try my answer and then Craig can give you the real answer, but um, the ones with the garages ha- don't have first floor bedrooms. Because the garage takes up the space for the first floor bedroom. So that, in order to be adaptable, we need that first floor bedroom, so townhouse style. Impractical.
All right. Your answer ready?
Thank you.
Brenda, do you have any questions?
You're muted, Brenda.
I'm muted. I guess, if you watch the evening news, they're anticipating that the tariffs are gonna have a significant impact on new construction costs. In any way with the increase in new construction costs, how would that be reflected in this project? If that does come to fruition.
I don't think the most intelligent economist in the world can answer that. Um, the owner is here, he cares that. That into consideration, but.
Then you're building either way, right? Sell them all and run.
Yeah.
There's really not enough. Answer to that question at the.
The structure's been high for five years. Yeah.
It's probably his for us.
All right, um, since this is a public hearing and we have a number of people both online. Um, and uh, in audience, uh, we're gonna open it up to questions. And what I'll do is I'll go back and forth between online and, and floor, and what we ask is that you uh, identify yourself for the record. And um, pose your question and uh, we'll move from there. So I'll start first with. Online, if anybody online has a question, would you please raise your hand? Don't see anybody at the moment, so we'll come back to that. We'll go to the audience. Anybody in the audience have a question either in support of or not pretty gentle?
Well, it's not really a question, but I'd like to say that I'm not from Toker. And I own that little parcel of land in the corner there. Um. I've lived there for over ninety years. Uh, so it's a little upsetting. To be surrounded. By this type of, of thing. I mean, my little, my little affordable own is there. Um. And as you can see, I'm bordered on both sides by this development. Which is somewhat upsetting. And my, I'm gonna let my granddaughter talk about it.
If I could finish her, her statement before.
Yeah, thank you.
Um. So she's over ninety years. She's been here. She's seen a lot of changes in her time. She's never been more worried than about what's happening in their town than what she is tonight. Being the senior citizen in the property borders two sides of her land where the housing development is proposed. She's come here to share her deep concerns and ask you to reconsider this plan. This part of town is no city water or sewer and it makes it very, makes her very uneasy. We rely on private wells out here, including her own, which is a very shallow well, like many of the others nearby. These shallow wells are easily affected if too much water is drawn or if a nearby septic system begins to fail. We worry that the new houses with all the water needs and wastewater will put pressure on the groundwater we depend on. If something happens to her well, she doesn't know how she'll manage and at her age, that kind of disruption could be devastating. Um, she has lost sleepless nights, um, the stress of all this, the upcoming noise and dust in the construction, it's keeping her at night. She's lived a quiet peaceful life here, she's worked hard to maintain her home and her independence. This development would be right on top of her, it's going to change everything, bring down property values and make it harder. For emergency crews to get through and destroy the rural, rural character that's made this place so special for so long. We ask that you look at this, not just as a set of building plans, but think about the people who will be affected. Think of the folks like her who've loved and cared for this land for generations. We're not asking for much just to live out our days in peace and the safety in her home that she's always known.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any hands raised around online. So I'll go back to the audience here. Yes, please.
Um, my name's Dorothy Spada, I live at eight sixteen Middlesex Turnpike, which is the home that is south. Bordering this property, I just want to start with two human things before I talk about my health and safety concerns. One is, as you can tell, it's brought great anxiety for us, we are the bordering residential neighbors. And we were not, I realize the town did not have to tell us, but we found out by accident about all of this. And so that was really overwhelming to see that this mini city is going to be put next to us. And really encompass Madeline's home, not so much ours, but it was just on a human level, that was really, it's been very upsetting. You know, we are longtime residents, not as long as Madeline, but you know, our. We should, our feelings should be taken a little bit in consideration about this. And I just want to take a roll of the call here, how many of you actually walked through this property to see how tight this is? In a residential? Nobody. I, I really encourage all of you to take a walk through and see how tight it is in. My home's been there since eighteen thirty and think about the changes that that has had. Little in the hundreds of years, the other homes across the street have been there, just, just. Please walk by it. Yeah, my concerns are what other people have brought up, the septic. Um, it's been septic concerns in that home before the applicant was there. Um, and then you're going to be adding thirty plus people, that's a lot, I realize you're putting in the septics, but that's a lot of. A lot of people, it's a lot of waste. And what if that fails? What happens to all of that? And how is that going to affect us? Um. The well water is the biggest concern. We lost a well in our property prior to us owning it, the property, the establishment to the north of us.
Or south.
South, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Contaminated our well. And um, so we had to, the property owners at the time had to move the well. To the other side, which is the driveway side almost at the beaches, we're on that. So if that is contaminated or somehow flawed, where are we going to put it? We don't have any more room. That's very concerning, you know, I think about that big fire that happened. The big fire that happened in Outer Cove, I know we're not Outer Cove, I'm on the nipple side, but. They had trouble getting water, where's all this water going to come, I realize that there's the two hour window thingy there, I get all that. Now, establishment on one side of us has forty plus cars on a given day, just sitting there. And whatever level of repair, now you're going to add thirty plus cars on the other side of my property. Um, where's all that extra, like the stuff that comes out of cars, where does that all go, is that going to affect my, the, the. Soil into the land into the well, you all may think I'm overreacting, but. That's a big concern, as well as a big fire concern. So now I'm going to be surrounded by about eighty cars. In my home, that's a lot, that's scary. So what happens if? The overflow from their septic comes over to us, what happens, where's that go? The runoff, where's that going to go, on a bad. Stormy day, it already overflows, not the septic, but the water, you know, it has to go somewhere, it seeps in there, it slows down everything. The wells. Um, the, the people, the other establishment on the other side, they just had to dig five hundred feet to get water. So, again, how is this all going to affect our well water? And you know, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, but those are real concerns. And we'd like some renewed, renewed insurance from the town, not just the proprietary property people. We'd like some reassurance, what is going to happen, how is that going to be monitored? These are real life concerns in our home. The light pollution, there's already a light on the applicant's home that shines into my bedroom every night. I have darkening curtains, we've moved our bed, it still shines into my room every night. So we're going to add twenty-five, forty more lights, you say that it's going to be night sky, but where's the reassurance that we're not going to be living in the city? I moved from the city, I don't want to be back in one. The noise. We do live in a dual zone, the only time we get any quiet is nights and weekends. And is that going to disappear, there's going to be more car traffic, it's already like living on ninety-five. And we're, are we going to, we're going to have to hear cars coming in and coming out and see those lights into our bedrooms or our houses? There's only the one waste receptacle we saw was going to. Border my neighbor's property and that's like one, only one waste place, that's, where's all? You know, is that enough, you know, we're worried about vermin coming and the smell.
You too?
Anybody else?
Uh, nobody's online, so you're next, sir.
My name's Lou Spada, I live at eight sixteen Middlesex Turnpike. I've been in construction back and forth with everything. The quarry or the gravel pit behind us. Um, is probably six feet below the level of this. Now, on the north side, it's only three feet. But where the ponds are, it's six feet. Now, when you get a hundred year rain, plus the twenty-eight hundred times more septic. Twenty-eight hundred times more septic, gray water, mixed with the rainwater. Where's that going to go down? The gentleman over there mentioned that earlier, that's for the Connecticut River, that runs down in there. It's almost like putting a septic, a sewer line from there right into the ponds and from the ponds down. Now you're dumping gray water. I'm also a commercial fisherman. I'm a shellfisher. We're having problems all over the coast because of bacteria. Alright, septic isn't the way to go with bacteria, that's the problem, a lot of these towns around the coast are having issues. My problem is that they wanted to subdivide that property. I know it's nothing to do with you guys, you got nothing to do with it, they want to put one home in. And it wouldn't let it. Now you're going to put, there's going to be fourteen here. All of them are going to have people living in it, or just the, the only one will be the repair shop. But now you got all that septic. Okay, it's constantly in the soil. Now you get that rain. It's going to merge with that, now I, I know these guys, they got it all figured out. All the sand and the gravel and all this, but what about the ledge in the back? That's why he didn't go any further with the gravel. That's ledge on the top down. So where's the water go with the rock? It's going to travel down, where's the down, the ponds? So now you've got all that water. Who's going, and the biggest thing for me is who's going to hold the responsibility? For the surface water, the groundwater, I already have that problem in my property. That water's no good. It's a forty foot hand dug well. And the water's no good, we already have an existing problem there. Okay, and now we're adding to it. Now, if they put a single house there, there's nothing we could say. Because you're putting a septic system in and everything else that would be dealing with that. But you're putting in fourteen more, you're putting in fourteen houses there. You have an existing house that I know for a fact, this lady here lived there since she was a baby. They had problems with their septic system. You had sand and gravel and all this, we can talk about it all we want, but it all comes down to the end. Who's liable for when it goes to shit? Sorry, excuse me, but when it goes, who's liable for that? Now, the government says they could put them in. Because they don't give a care. I do, I live there. This poor woman lives there. You put up that apartment complex. It's going to knock her property values down to nothing. And in mine too, and now right on the other side of that, what do you think he's got, that's Bud Hull or Hill over there? Or Alan, not Alan, yeah, Bud, the son, right behind him is the other house. I mean, you, you can't just go into an area with no sewer, no water. Put all these buildings in, you're going to have to drill another well just for fire. Cause you're not putting a single home. Now you're putting in twelve. Like they said, they're single dwellings, so there's twelve homes there. What's going to happen if they have a fire, what are you going to have seventeen tanker trucks there? Or run eight miles of hose down to a pond? I mean, we got to think a little bit about all of it. Why didn't he just get the property down further to the other side of Route nine? There's sewer and water. There wouldn't be any of this problem. And there's plenty of property down here for sale. Why, why, I don't get it, how we can let this go? They wanted to put a single dwelling in, fine, but not. Where is it, twelve, twelve more homes on top of it? It doesn't make sense. On an acre and a quarter. What's the, Christine, what's the minimum acres you can build on here in Sabre?
About acres, this is a different.
Going board, I'm not asking, the government's going to do what they want. I mean, if they wanted that enough, they're just going to step in and say, perfect. Don't worry about the environment or anything else.
But, no, as it, as it was said in the very beginning, it's Mr. Casella told us all it was in eight dash thirty G. So it doesn't matter what our regulations are.
Oh no, I understand that, I understand all that. But what I'm saying is though, there's so many other things involved just in the environment. I mean, the septic, the gray water, the runoff water, okay, I live there, I'm not reading it on a book. Nobody come in and told me, I live there, I deal with the groundwater that's contaminated. Alright, from next door.
So the issue with, as you brought up with the groundwater and the hundred year storm, uh. The capacity for absorption and where it goes, that's been referred to our consulting engineer. And the Connecticut River Area Health District gets a look at that. And at, at, what's the capacity is, the septic systems are going for these units, does it exceed? What, what's the max, it, does it exceed five thousand gallons per day?
No.
No.
No, the max is seventy-five hundred gallons per day per property now, going up to ten thousand gallons per day, but it's.
At seventy-five hundred gallons per day, the D E E P gets involved. That's not going to happen.
I understand what you're saying, but you might add the gray water. And that water together. Now, yeah, one's on one side of the yard, the other's on the other side of the yard. I understand that, but funny thing, there's no wall under, wall under the ground. My groundwater is contaminated. Alright, so now you're going to add more to that. I just think it needs to be taken and really seriously looked at.
Right, and that's, that's, you're just lame people.
No, no, I understand, I understand, I just.
We've referred it to the, I think we've referred it to the proper authorities and the, the expertise. That will give us an answer that. You might not like, but an answer that will do the best engineering, not regulation, not political, but the engineering.
But just at the point when it all goes to hell. Who's liable? That's the problem, because nobody ever seems to be liable when it goes away. You know what I mean, it's, oh, I'm sorry, oh, they should have done better, but somebody has to be held liable. My point is, I know nobody here can do anything. My, my serious point is, if you were going to do something like this, wouldn't you have bought a piece of property? Where there's septic or where there's sewer and water? Right, I mean, I, I, I'm using the C word, common sense. I'm, I'm sorry, okay, I'm done, I'm done.
Thank you, and, and the reason that we have these public hearings is to hear from you and, and get assessment from. The property owners that surround the potential development, to understand the picture. Our hands sometimes are somewhat tied, okay, um, but we try to do the most efficient and proper. Proceedings to look through all of the requirements, when it goes into an eight thirty G application, our hands are tied. As the statutory organization, um, but we hear you, and when those questions will be.
Well, that's all I, I, I was told, don't even bother coming. Because the state accepted, stepped in and said that the house is going in.
Crad, crad has not issued, as far as I'm aware, crad has not issued an approval yet for a system.
Okay.
Okay, and as part of an application to this commission, there has to be an approval.
Okay.
Before we can hear it completely, okay?
Yep.
So we have to wait for that to take place.
Okay.
Alright.
Yep. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now, the, the May fifth thing, is that?
That's the next, that's a public hearing, you're welcome to come back.
Okay.
It will be advertised.
Very good.
No hands online, anybody else in the audience, yes?
Um, so I'm Merritt Devaney, I'm speaking on behalf, again, I prepared a statement on behalf of my grandmother. Couple of things at the affordability review meeting that they attended, um, the affordability commission did ask that of the six units that were being sold as condos. That one of those be considered to be sold at the affordability rate. Um, that was something that was brought up that was not mentioned tonight, it didn't seem to pass any of attention, um. So that being said, um, while I understand that this project may proceed unless there are clear health and safety concerns. I believe there's several serious issues that warrant careful attention and mitigation before any approval is granted. Um, one of my major concerns is the placement of the commercial dumpster, which is less than forty feet from my grandmother's back deck. Um, while there's other nearby residential properties, hers is the most directly affected. As the dumpster would sit extremely close to her house in her outdoor living area. Dumpsters emit strong odors, attract rodents, impose sanitation risk, especially during the warmer months. It's wholly inappropriate to locate one so close to a senior citizen and it presents a real threat to her health and well-being. In addition, the vehicle headlights of cars entering exits of development, they'll shine darkly onto her property, creating an ongoing disruption to her daily life. Um, the other thing I found out tonight, the lights, they're fourteen feet from the ground at the light posts, I feel like that's. An absurd height for lights, um, but. To help mitigate this impact, I respectfully request that a solid foot, seven foot privacy fence be required along all shared property lines. It served to reduce noise, block intrusive lighting, provide a much needed buffer to protect her quality of light. We're also deeply concerned about the impact of the wells, as it's been mentioned. Um, the addition of new wells could significantly strain the local water table, leading to reduced water quality. Which there is already an issue in that area. For these reasons, we respectfully ask the commission to withhold approval of this development unless the following conditions are met, connection to city water. Not at the town's expense. The relocation of the dumpster as far as possible from adjacent residential homes to minimize health risks, odors and pests. And the installation of a seven foot privacy fence. These are not unreasonable requests, they're essential protections for the health, safety and well-being of the residents who always live in, already live in this neighborhood. If this development is to move forward, it must do so with full and fair consideration of those who already lives there.
Thank you. Anyone else willing, uh, interested in speaking? No one in the audience, there is no one online? Uh, Drake DeSala, would you want to make any?
You can start.
Thank you.
Go.
Thank you.
All right.
Sewer and water. So again, Joe Ren for the record, yes, this project cannot be built unless we have health department approval, right?
Excuse me, can I ask a question? You say health department, dude, like the town health department, the state health department. I'm sorry.
Connecticut River Area Health, which is responsible for...
The one at the train station?
That's correct.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yes, so without health district approval, project can't proceed, right? So what they're charged with is looking at the wells and the septic systems and making sure that meets the connect public health code. They need certification. They contact people at the EPH, Department of Public Health at the state level, and they'll ask them for some clarification. But at the end of the day, once we have that approval, it's saying that they reviewed it and everything meets the public health code. So in the, we have septic systems on here. There is no sewer available in town, as we all know. Every property in the vulnerable state area is on a septic system. And same goes for Tom Westbrook, Tom Clinton, Tom Madison. Most of our shoreline, most of all line as well, there's one section of each community that goes to the sanitary sewer. There is no sanitary sewer available. And as you know, the state mandate is that each community provide at least ten percent affordable housing. And in order to get that, you have to build new units, to build new units that have to be on septic system. So there's no way around it. Public water from here, I believe, is at least a half mile in one direction and would make this project not possible and fail. It's just not financially viable. And if we want to add affordable units in this town, we have to consider projects like this. As far as the stormwater, stormwater, as I mentioned earlier, is all contained on the site. All the water that drains to this site is self-contained and infiltrated into the groundwater. That's a known best management practice, and it's in all the current Connecticut stormwater manuals, some water quality manuals and so forth. In the catch basins themselves, we have sumps that collect sediments and so forth that have to be maintained, of course, just like anything, whether it's your car, your home, whatever, everything has to be maintained. We have maintenance programs for the stormwater systems on the plans themselves. And the last outlet before it gets into the infiltration has an outlet hood on it, which we're all used to those terms now. The outlet hood traps floatables and including things that float on water like oils. Greases, all that floats on the water, so that can be cleaned separately and maintained. That way, the hood basically covers the pipe outlet. So anything, once there's a water level in the basin, nothing can get up under into the pipe. Everything floats on the outside and it could be collected and treated separately. It's part of the maintenance program. So that is very limited of any that gets into the groundwater. No one would wanna directly put that into the groundwater. So that's why these measures are in place. We have some curb limitations. We're promoting overland flow. There is nowhere, if you had a big detention based on the site, there's nowhere to discharge it to if you're not going directly to private property. So fortunate for this site, we dug several test holes out here. It's very well-draining sands and gravels. The back portion of the property where the stormwater infiltration system is, is we went down eight or nine feet as far as we could reach with the backhoe that we dug that day, and it's all beautiful sand. Pure sand all the way down, which is excellent for septic systems and stormwater infiltration systems. There is a separation distance from the well to the stormwater infiltration system, which is a hundred feet or like a hundred and fifty feet. So we see that distance. That was one of Jeff Jacobson's comments. The shallow well gets its water source from a different level in the ground than the drilled wells. There's a, currently, there's a drilled well on the site that produces really good water quality, right? And really, and really good yield. Do you know the depth of it?
I don't know the depth, ten gallons.
But it's, it's probably a three, four hundred feet, right?
Probably to be fifty.
So approximately, approximately three hundred and fifty feet deep, the shallow well we're talking about is forty feet deep. It gets, the shallow dug wells are gravel-packed wells, and it gets the water more from the local surface area, and that gets into the local water table. These wells are drilled wells. They're several hundred feet into the ground, and they go tween layers of bedrock and grab an aquifer, the sand and gravel between the bedrock. So it's vertically kind of protected, and it, it runs from a separate source than the shallow wells do. Very, the well that's there now, not too far, it's right just to the south of the house. So these are just a little twenty, thirty feet to the west of that well, and it gets excellent water quality that's not treated, and it has a great yield. That, that well itself could provide water for this entire community. We're just required to have two, two wells for this. For this particular well, but one, and if it gets the same yield as the existing one, could provide for the whole community. As far as the lights, all the lights, we provided for the metrics plans. Architectural Review Board already looked at it. There's no light trespass. Everything's dark sky compliant, shining downward. The fourteen foot is the maximum in your zoning regulation, so we stuck with that. We do have fujia green arborvitae's all around that whole entire south property line, which could be replaced with a fence, but arguably, if you all know the fujia green arborvitae's, they're just a really nice green screen and they grow really quick. The plant at height is probably six feet minimum. I think that we have on there, and they, they're big bushy evergreens. The deer, the deer do not eat the fujias because they have a cedar species element cross, and the deer do not eat them. So you don't get the lollipop style, as you do with the regular arborvitae's that you would buy at your local landscape shop. The deer like to eat those, these, the deer don't like to eat, so they stay big and full and they're evergreen. So that's what we have on here now. I'm sure the owner would consider a fence, but I, I think the green wall, the evergreen wall is, is a better separation to that. The dumpster, we will, we will look at other potential locations. We just need an SU thirty, a thirty-foot-long vehicle. We need to be able to access that dumpster so it can empty and maintain the dumpster. So we'll consider other locations for that. Right now, it kind of meets anything, you know, any code requirement that we know of. It has a full, did we put a masonry wall around it or just...
No, it's just...
So right now, we have a fenced enclosure on three sides, solid fenced enclosure, and a gate on the front side of it. But willing to, you know, hear the commission if there's any suggestions on, on that. We're required to have one. We're required to have the enclosure. But if there are any recommendations on that, we can look into that. Was that really some of our septic wells? I think that covers most of the items. If there's something I left off, that's...
You know, a no-brainer would be to pick up when the truck turns around on the right side of the property.
Yeah, we looked at that. We actually just talked about that again today. And over there, right now, we just have a five-foot tab for those end parking spots to be able to back into and pull out forward. And if we had the dumpster there, we would have no, no turning area, backing area for those vehicles. They would have to back straight up. And that is one of the areas that we're gonna look at and consider.
Chris, you have some questions?
So one, one of the issues obviously is water. And I know you're in front of the health district, and I think the commission understands eight thirty G, affordable housing. We typically have applications with public water. We understand that, you know, it's too much to get the public water down the road. But to address the concerns not only of the neighbors, but also the success of the development, have you thought about doing any drilling or any other testing other than what's there before to show that the development is going to have enough water, just enough water as well as the fire concerns? So that's, was from the fire department. I'm just trying to think of a way. We have a lot of people here. They have comments about water and wells. Is there anything you can provide for the next meeting or any drilling or any other, other than what's out there now to try to alleviate the concerns of there not gonna be enough water?
So, two things. One, any well is not gonna keep up with the needs of fire. You would need huge storage that you have suction from. There are two on your GIS, Tom GIS, there are two draft locations. There's one in the quarry ponds, in the gravel pit, two hundred feet behind the site. That's a legitimate on the town GIS system as a fire draft location. And then across the street off of Monk Road where the dam is, that's another draft location.
But I believe the draft locations are potential water sources. You'd have to have some kind of a dry hydrant there and permission from the property owner to do it. So that's the issue right now in Otter Cove where the house is burned. There, the fire department is working, and I can ask the fire department with a private property owner to see if they can put a dry hydrant at that well. So I, I think that's, it's, I don't think they can just go onto someone's property and drain their pond.
Well, somehow someone put a draft location on the GIS, so there's gotta be some permission to do it.
I don't think it's permission. I think it's feasibility.
Okay, it doesn't say that on GIS, but anyway.
I'll...
That's one thing that we noticed, because just to the east is a draft location, just to the west is a draft location. This property is right inside.
So right now, we're discussing with the fire department a private property owner, permission to go on a property that pond actually also has, it in the wetlands and water course, to go through and get permits to do that. So I don't know of any permits that the fire department has. I can check on that.
Right. Yeah, somehow there was information on that.
I think it's feasibility.
Way to, to, anyways, that's what we noticed, that there is a layer on GIS and that shows the two draft locations. The other things, once we got fire chief's comments like last Thursday before the day off on Friday, and we had some time to digest those comments, we're, just today, we had a meeting with that code consultant to see how it applies, since these are treated as single-family attached townhomes with a two-hour firewall. So we're trying to determine what the water requirement is in that particular case and go from there. There are, there are options. There are some self-contained options, and we're evaluating all that.
So you explained that, but I guess the question is, don't we need to evaluate how much water is there and say that it's gonna work? How, how do you, how do you address the concerns of the neighbors as well as you're gonna build a housing development with an affordable component, which is great? But when do you, when do you know for sure that you're gonna have enough water to service all of these units?
So, right now, the existing well that's twenty or thirty feet away from these two proposed wells provides ten gallons per minute, which is fourteen thousand four hundred gallons per day, which is multiples of this development. Each unit is about three hundred gallons a day each. That's eighteen, that's thirty-six hundred gallons plus the single-family house. Say it's five thousand, say it's seven thousand gallons a day. The existing well provides fourteen thousand. We're gonna have two multiples. So even if the two wells still provide fourteen thousand, we're still double of what's required.
So I guess what I'm trying to say, is there a way with this second well to get some information before to assure that that water's there versus relying on another well?
But we have, what you would do is...
Have you drilled?
They just drilled it, this well is only...
So you have, you have, it's just been drilled. You have that from the...
That's what I mean.
So that's, I think, what we're asking, because we're not aware of where you are with the full water thing. So you recently drilled the second well to test.
Correct. No.
No, you drilled the second.
There's a new well for the house next to where we're drilling these, so it's the same thing as drilling now. You're gonna get...
There's...
Getting to the same body of water aquifer that's underground.
There's, there's water use for the, for the twelve units or thirteen units, okay, which is one thing. The other, which I feel is more important, is what if, in the event there was a fire in the area, what's the water supply that could adequately manage that? We've already seen from recent history that it's a challenge.
Right.
What we're looking for is for you to supply some kind of documentation or some type of information that says that you have that under consideration and you have options. So that we can adequately review this, because as you know, on an eight thirty G, it comes down to public health and safety that this commission can do anything about.
And that's why we're about to get co-concent on board and review all that.
That's right. And that's for, that's for that aspect of it. But we, we're, we're, we're the cart's in front of the horse. We don't have that information. We need that in order to assess this, and that's why we're, you've already asked for a continuation to the fifth, but people in, in the audience have, have concern as others do in that part of town. We're just looking to have some type of support that says this is what's gonna...
Yeah, as a response to, to the fire chief's comments from like last Thursday, we immediately got them.
And we had to hire Easter holiday.
With the co-concent, we had a meeting with them today, so we're right on that once we got it.
I think we're just making suggestions, so we can, yeah.
Yeah.
Take care of this at the next meeting and address everybody's concerns.
Well, and we want to know certainly that the fire chief feels his concerns have been addressed, right?
We need to get the fire marshal also to, to chime in. We need to have the fire marshal opinion on this, which is, which, which, which we don't have at this point. So we're just making sure that we're all clear, because the purpose of the discussion this evening is they're looking for what they need in order to come back and get an approval. And we're telling them, we need more information along these lines in order to make an educated decision.
During the design process, we reached out to the fire marshal a couple of times, but very difficult to get a meeting with.
I'm sure you will, I'm sure you will get in contact.
So if you can help us along with that.
Just one, one other question. There's one section that you have fencing on the property, and I know some of the other neighbors were asking about fencing. And then we all know that there's an act, active construction operation. But the area that you're gonna have a recreation area, I'm assuming where kids and people are gonna play, you're gonna make it into a scenic overlook of this pond. So there's no thought of kind of blocking off to keep, keep children from running into the construction site?
We'll put up no trespassing signs.
I, I'm just, I don't know, I was looking, it just didn't make sense to me, but...
You can't see the pond.
The college don't... You can't see the pond anyway. There's a giant burn in the way. You can't see a pond coming in.
I don't, that, that's kind of why I was asking the question, if there's some view from here with benches. No, no, I'm just saying it's a recreation area.
We were trying to provide a nice amenity.
No, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing. I'm just...
We could take them up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just...
Consideration of the...
I guess I never really kind of thought of it as a scenic overlook, which is nice if that can be done, just...
If there's no other questions or presentations or comments from the field at this point, we'll continue this to our next regularly scheduled, oh, I'm sorry.
One comment.
Sure.
But I think I'm still, I need to...
Sure.
My name is Heidi Endrich Bone. I live up the street.
Can, can you say your last name?
It's Endrich, E-N-D-R-I-C-H hyphen Bone, B-O-N-E.
Thank you.
I live up the street. Madeline is my aunt, and this location is where this construction is gonna have, it used to be my grandmother's house. I do encourage all of you to go and take a look at this location. It is almost unfathomable to me, but there's gonna be twelve single-family homes, basically, on this one point two five acre lot. I can't even, like, it's, it's small. And already there's, you know, you're talking about problems getting in fire trucks and garbage trucks, and there's no room to do this, and there's no room to do that. That is a lot on that location. A lot. And I understand affordable housing. We need affordable housing. But there's, there's gotta be other options. And I agree with everything that everybody said about the water. The water could potentially affect me as well. You know, I have a shallow well. My home is a hundred years old. I have a shallow well. You know, so you're taking water from down below, but is that water gonna be draining down from, from the surface? Of course it is. So everything that these folks said, I agree with a hundred percent. I just wanted to share that. I do encourage everybody to go and look at the site. It's, it's very tight.
Thank you. Any, no question? Anybody online have a question? Not seeing any, again, Ray, we'll continue the application. Continue the whispering wins application for site plan approval for affordable housing development. On an eight thirty G to our next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, May fifth. At seven P M, Town Hall for the floor conference. Thank you all.
Thank you.
This is second. Second by Laura.
Actually, long favor.
Okay, continuing, um, we have our. Uh, twenty twenty four outdoor, outdoor seating. Chris.
Okay, I can, I have the list, same list as last year. Uh, we.
All right, sorry.
So it's the same uh list as last year. We sent out the letter. Remember we stopped. Asking if they wanted to redo it, just said, were there any changes or just continued? We haven't heard anything back about the distributing the list if you wanna. Here we go through all of them and hurry up. Uh, so we need a motion through the outdoor seat.
I'm pressing any complaints from any of those locations about. I haven't heard anything either. Second by James. Any discussion? I'm hearing any of all those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, pass of five zero zero. Our next is discussion on possible regulation amendments.
All right, so we talked about, yeah, here and there we do our, our annual housekeeping for regulation changes. Um, a few things that came up, and I know here and there, um. The board comes up with ideas or finds something that just a problematic regulation. So we do our annual, we call them the housekeeping fixes. Um, so just a few things, if you would be interesting, interested in making some amendments. Uh, one of the things that is kind of interesting is that. I was approached by the high school. To put a sign on the high school, and we don't have any wall sign regulations for high schools. They wanna put the crest. So we don't allow wall signs in the Residence A district, but that's why it says Town Hall, the Cape and so forth. So would this be something you'd be interested? In a regulation?
Just your name or?
So right now, I mean, there, there's no sign regulation for the Residence A district. It's only a freestanding sign. So they're, they're looking to put a logo. Over where it says Old Sabre High School. If you look at all of our buildings in Residence A, town buildings, it says. Town Hall, there's no. So I looked it up. I said, wait a minute, we don't have a defined sign regulation. So the thought would be if there was a special exception use in the Residence A district. Would they be allowed, would you consider having a non, ever in, in a sign that's not internally illuminated?
They have a sign now that says Old Sabre High School. Now they're looking to put the. Logo for the high school above it on the building. We don't have it.
Well, it's kind of interesting because now I look at it, it says Town Hall in the front and the crest is on the side of the building. So I don't know if somehow it dropped out of the regulations, some type of a wall sign in the Residence A district or, or what happened? I did make it into a research project, but I just said, well, maybe we should take a look at it.
It's in President A.
Yeah.
It's more than just a high school.
It's the town hall, it's the cave, it's, I mean, any special exception use. So it's only the freestanding sign. So I don't know if somewhere it got omitted. And that also encompasses the S P Saber Point District. So the thought would be to allow potentially a wall sign externally illuminated. As a special exception. Because most of these uses for special exception uses. It'd be restricted to municipal buildings? We typically try not to.
Okay.
And we could, but described that way. So for example, the fire department, anything is that. That's the gray, you get into these gray areas with that.
So, this would go in the sign section.
Under Residence A, so this. And we allow for a wall sign. For special exception uses only. Externally illuminated. And then I kind of went through the numbers, I mean. Forty or fifty square feet?
Well, the starting point, wouldn't it, would not the starting point be to have the same? Max, A or B, set max seventy five.
But we're in a residence zone. That's, I guess.
In a residence zone, should it have? Lower square foot. Twenty, twenty percent and five percent?
I, I'm just saying, maybe just think, like, what would the cap be?
I, I would.
I'm thinking, I, I'm not even looking at the percentage. What would the cap be?
Forty square feet, I think, should be considered. I guess we're in favor of some sort of little regulation, you know?
What these square feet sounds huge.
In theory, I don't have a problem with it, but can we differentiate in that way in one zone?
We're not differentiating.
Like we say, these uses are allowed to have this size sign, but other uses aren't allowed to have this size sign in the same zone.
So there would be special exception uses. So you couldn't put a forty square foot welcome sign on your house.
Right, but can we actually do that?
And we can even do it to the municipal uses, but we typically. Don't do that.
Any idea what the question is?
I, I don't know. I'm just kind of, I'm, I'm throwing out the idea, was it something you would entertain? For a fix. So rather not write or fix anything if you don't wanna fix it.
If we didn't do a fix, and the high school wants the sign, what is their option?
They would go for a variance with no hardship.
I don't know.
What, for a fix?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you mean by fix?
Well, did we write?
These are things we hear in there. This thing come up, and I'm like, wait a minute, this doesn't really mean.
An amendment or a fix.
Yeah, yeah, we call them our. Housekeeping fixes. So, all right, so that one. Um, the other one I brought up at some point is.
Just, if you put in. Different standards for Residence A, then they have to change sixty four point three standards all district?
Uh, that's what I mean. I'd have to go through and look at.
Oh, okay.
Would there be a maximum height? Two?
It would be on the wall. So we allow for freestanding. We don't allow for a wall sign.
But this would be on.
Right.
So we, but I mean, would we, it could go to the top of the building?
It can go anywhere on the wall, as long as it's on the wall. Measure to a maximum height of twelve feet by the width.
Ten, it's gonna stay ten feet below the roof line.
Roof line.
The height of it, right?
No, it's measured ten feet. So you measure your calculation, the maximum of ten feet in height, even if the wall is forty feet high by the width of the actual wall, not the width of the facade. So when we have our jogs in the new building.
I, I would, I was thinking in place.
So we don't regulate that?
Well, we just, what do we just do with the auto mall? You don't decide had to be at the, had it, had to be.
So it can't be above the roof line. It has to be on a wall, not on a.
Sorry.
All right.
Next.
Next, um. All right, so the other thing, and I think we need to do it anyway, is just to go through our regulations again for convalescent group home and other. Acts, just to make sure the statute change here and there, just to make sure that everything is on the up and up. Um. The other one is the pedestrian node. We still have some text on sidewalk design, but that's changed over the years. So. When it was created, it would say, okay, you're gonna have a room finish sidewalk in this area. This area is gonna have soldier course. But what's physically happened through grants. Um, is that there were certain areas of town that didn't follow the patterns, and then it became so complicated, the town simplified it a little. So it would be just to kind of remove that text, and then we could just go through with the area and match what's there. Okay, um, the next one here. Uh, accessory dwelling unit. Add text. So we've had a few situations where people have been this close to being able to put an accessory apartment. But they have, instead of the twelve thousand five hundred, they have like twelve thousand four hundred and fifty, but we prohibited. The size variance. So if someone who has a lot is just a little bit short. We prohibited them from going for a variance. They can meet all the side setbacks and everything else. Would there be any thought about lifting that twelve five? And they're the variant, or the variance prohibition?
Li- lifting a twelve five to zero?
Well, reducing it. I, I, so it's kind of tricky. So the way we did this initially was the regulation had a prohibition to avoid Z V A granting variance, so we had. A D U's on twelve five thousand square foot lots. The reality is, we're not gonna get A D U's on these teeny lots. So the question is, and I actually made a mistake, and I told someone they should probably just apply for the variance. Because they have this little fifty square feet or whatever it was, a hundred square feet. Then I looked at the prohibitions and we expressly prohibited to stop the Z V A. From approving these variances. So. If we lift the prohibition and people go to Z V A, it's probably likely that they'll get them. But the question is, do we want to consider some flexibility from that twelve five number?
They comply with the statutes.
So I mean, we could say if, if we remove the twelve five. And they applied for no other variances. We can make a prohibition that they have to meet everything else, including the health code. We can keep it the same. It's.
How many lots are eligible?
It's gonna depend on the soils and the location. Any if they can meet all the setbacks and coverage. So if they can meet, I mean, you could go through and eliminate the twelve five and just do a hypothetical. But then put the prohibition on variances of setbacks or the bulk regulations or the coverage, and they have to meet the health.
Cause otherwise.
Yeah.
So we, we actually had three of them. I mean, they're, they're like that close or in two hundred square feet off. So they have everything designed, can meet all the regs, can meet the coverage. I'm looking at Bob anyway. He's gonna say something.
Probably more of these situations around than you realize. So. The complaint stems from, there's this one thing that's keeping me from doing what I want. But in reality, there's multiple things in play. There's setbacks and soils and other stuff. Is there a way to write a regulation that combines a combination of A and B and C? So that if you have only one of these three conditions, you could proceed. But if you have two of these conditions, you're dead in the water. And then we go to the next level where, oh, I have two of these things, but I'm prohibited and.
Well, I mean, I think. You look at it this way, if you can meet all the setbacks, you're not further infringing on your neighbors. You can meet the coverage in the gross floor area. Instead of having the prohibition on the twelve five. Have the prohibition on variances of the bulk standards, setbacks and coverage. People are not gonna be able to put an accessory dwelling unit on a three thousand square foot lot. With fifteen foot sideline setbacks and all of the other stuff. So it's either, it's really gonna be the health code that's gonna dictate.
But they would have to meet all the other regulations.
Right.
That's, that's the one that would really control that. Also by health district on the soils. And if you got somebody that has a, a, a twelve thousand four hundred square foot lot, means everything else except for the twelve four.
Right.
Why not?
I, I get where you're going, Bob. Where do you, you know, where do you kind of?
Make it a, make it, make them both conforming.
Well, I mean, we have the regulation that you can't split off a lot. And make an A D U a separate lot. So that's one of the prohibitions for the variance. But some of these, I mean, people come in with the, the design and it all makes sense, and they're, they just can't do it.
And you've had three in the past year?
Probably in the past six months, yeah.
Well. Even in this recording, I'll say that if they were eligible for a variance, the odds are that they would probably get the variance. And so, with that in mind. It's, do you wish, is it good zoning to allow for it to happen? And if so, then change the zoning regs. And if it's not good zoning, then prohibit it so that it's not. Allowed or per- permitted by a different panel. That's what it boils down to.
Well, I, I think, I think that's. If we, we lift the prohibition, then an applicant can go to Z V A really with no hardship. To create this accessory dwelling unit. So why do you wanna put an applicant in that position anyway? Whether the Z V A is willing to approve it or deny it. So the thought is, remove the lot size, keep the setbacks, keep the gross floor. Keep everything bulk related. As long as it's on a building lot with a house, whether it's not conforming or not, they can fit it on there. And meet the other regulations, just kind of switch the prohibition to the bulk standards.
That would be good zoning.
Prohibit something else.
Well, yeah, something else may come.
In order to prohibit it from happening.
Yeah.
Because, in reality, it probably would.
So essentially, it would be the same as what they could do with an addition to the house. Or any other construction on the property, but in this case, instead of being a simple addition, they can do it as an accessory dwelling. Or it. A, or it could be separated, it could be detached, but it's the same as like what they could normally do on a lot, but it adds an extra dwelling.
No, so we have accessory dwelling unit regulations attached or detached.
Right.
Twelve five is this magic number.
Right.
But the problem is people can meet, the health code put one or two systems on the lot.
Well, that's what I.
They don't have the twelve five. So it's not the same as an addition. It would just rather than have the twelve five. Be that gatekeeper. It would be meeting all the setbacks.
Right. So like what you could, if you were looking to do something else on your lot that wasn't an accessory dwelling unit, like if I wanna add on to my house with. Bedrooms or what have you and.
I see what you're saying. So you.
But it doesn't have a kitchen, but in this case, I could now have a kitchen.
Yes, right.
I think it makes the Z V A decisions clearer. What would it go to Z V A?
Well. Well, I mean, I guess. We, we've gone through and we've learned with accessory dwelling units, it's kind of in a work in progress. You know, we've made a few changes here and there as we've stumbled. On them. We've had them in place since the seventies, the detached. The detached ones are, I know, the, the newer ones. So here and there, we're learning a little bit about it now that we opened it out and did it up. So, I mean, I could take a stab, and I just don't wanna.
Yes, so by, what we have today, in the last six months, you probably had three of them. So we've reduced, we've lost the opportunity to provide some type of affordable. Living as an accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
And by taking the twelve five, eliminating the twelve five, but maintaining all the other standards. the twelve five, eliminating the twelve five, but maintaining all the other standards. There's, there's an opportunity to, to have that. I would think that that would be a wise move on the zoning commission to be able to do that. So I think we should explore it as an option.
Alright. I think that really was it for the regulation changes unless you had something else. How many portable units do we have? Detached housing units are there in? Yeah, I sent the numbers, I don't know it off the top of my head. We permitted in the past few years about twenty of them since the regulation went in place and we have about seventy. I can send you those numbers again, I sent it out, I don't know, maybe six months ago, the breakdown, because it was kind of interesting. It was kind of interesting to see how um people are using them.
Okay, so twenty detached and how many are attached? Cause that was the first.
I'll get you then we got so.
Right.
So that was like in the seventies attachments through, so we've got about sixty, sixty or seventy, twenty new detached. But what people are doing too, I'm finding is that they come in, they're gonna add a garage. They know about the regulation and they see, you know, maybe I'm just gonna go and build this apartment because someday um my grandmother, my mother's gonna need to move in. And then by the time my mother's moving out, my kids are gonna need somewhere to live. So the, it's kind of, it's an interesting cycle on, on what's what people are thinking. And, and I think I mentioned this, I had a person on the larger lot who actually said, can I have two? And it was one for, one for my mother and one for my aunt or mother and all. He said, then I can put everybody in the yard. We're all far enough away, we can see that everybody's, but you know, when, when you look at assisted living and, and people on fixed incomes living, you know, you can keep an eye on your family members, whether they're teenagers or, or college kids or ninety two, ninety two, yeah, exactly.
Um, okay, discussion, oh no, sorry, committee representative and staff report.
Uh, you've been quickly um, we had an interesting request. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, Bobby brought up, um, he had some concerns on bed and breakfast, I'll add that to the list. He found some text. Uh, the first one, I'm sorry, we got a lot. Is that we have clients looking to lease space that are marine and navy special operation veterans that train high-end dogs. So the dogs come from Denmark and are world renowned, three third generation breeders for this purpose. They're very expensive dogs, so the environment is controlled. The dogs are trained to search for drugs, explosives, firearms and private home security. Their clients are government, police and very affluent homeowners. Apparently people fly from Europe to pick up these pick up these dogs for surveillance for their homes. Um, it's not technically a kennel, but like a doggy daycare with disciplined training. The growth plan would have up to twenty five dogs. The owners would appreciate a facility to conduct training of the dog handlers hosts and have amenities to bathe the dogs and for the police and military officers training the dogs to shower. It's kind of an interesting. So I, I guess, is it a kennel?
Well, it isn't goat, right?
No, I know, I know, that's kind of what I'm thinking and if it's not a kennel, if it's not a kennel, the question is, would we consider a tax amendment to allow something like this?
A tax amendment for what?
To allow this.
Allow for training, but uh, in what, where is it in our regulation for under kennels?
As a new regulation.
As a new regulation.
So like a.
Why is it not a kennel?
I, well, I think it's a kennel. The question is, would we entertain a regulation change to allow someone to train dogs?
Doesn't matter what they do with the dogs, it's a kennel. The dogs are here. My views is dogs, time, space, land. Doesn't matter what you're doing, that, let's hope it's legal, but, but, but that's as far as zoning goes. It's a kennel.
So would the commission be open to amending the regulations so that it's not a kennel to allow this dog training type use?
So there could be multiple dogs being trained to find guns or to find drugs? And are there restrictions on the amount of guns and drugs on the premises? I mean, we're looking at the dogs, but shouldn't we be looking at the drugs and the guns?
Wow, that's a good spin, Brett.
Keep in mind, I'm diminished, so.
I, I, I didn't really, I didn't really ask how many how many little drugs or guns.
I don't know how to train a dog to find a drug without exposing them to a drug or to expose them to a gun. So, and when you've got multiple dogs.
Well, presumably if they do that, it's overseen by somebody.
Well, their police or military, so that's the.
It's kind of outside our, our region that way.
It is, so I guess.
So we're back to, we're back to, is it a kennel?
If we had marine and operations, special operations folks, training high-end dogs to find catnip and toy guns. Well, would we allow it? And then they would have kind of an overnight facility, so pretty much they would get a house or commercial location, have a fenced area, train the dogs to find X, Y, Z. Would we entertain that type of a regulation change to allow a person to use?
We want to write car reg's prohibited at kennel right now.
So if you look, section nine is the definition of kennel and then kennel, it would, this would obviously exceed the number, is it six? Six is the number.
If they're dogs.
And if they're overnight.
Dogs, number of dogs, kennel kicks in. Setbacks, distance from other stuff kicks in. And is there a maximum number?
The max they would ever have is twenty five and that would be their total bill.
Well, that's what they're saying, we don't have a maximum for a kennel.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying. The question is, would you entertain a regulation change to allow such use? Are they wasting their time?
Uh, I'll stick my neck out and say, no, I, I as one member of the commission would not entertain.
I'm just thinking, why doesn't it fit into what we have?
Because it's the number of dogs on the property becomes a kennel. So if we have that number of dogs and the dogs are staying overnight, which if you're doing that training, you'd have.
It's like, well, you've been rules from.
They're asking. They're asking for a text amendment because this really isn't a kennel, this is special ops for dog.
No, no, no.
Training.
It's a kennel.
No, that's what they're saying, yes, okay.
That's like.
So.
An ice cream store can only sell these flavors?
No, no, no.
Allow, so we have.
If they have six or more dogs, they're not allowed.
Then they become a kennel. So this way, if you have the dogs overnight, right, then that's twenty five dogs would be the max. And then they would have the training for the dogs, this military training for these special.
I think there's a, there's a lot of questions to go into that. Twenty five dogs stay there for how long? How long does it take to train a dog to adequately become a, uh, you know, sniff out drugs or whatever they're, they're doing? I mean, that's I, I, I think we have a regulation and definition that currently allows for it with a controlled number, I think twenty five is.
Well, it would become a kennel, so then you would consider it a kennel, they need a larger property, not a smaller.
Right.
But it says that it's not considered a kennel when located in a business district.
So that, that was when we had the what was that, the doggy?
I mean, some doggy day.
Doggy day camp, doggy day camp.
Yeah.
So you had one of those?
There was a regulation change for some pretty large number of dogs in and out, but they wanted to go to a location that was just not a very high traffic congested location, then they got frustrated, they couldn't move where they wanted to. We changed the reg, that, that's why I brought it up, because we did change the reg for that. It sounds like a, a business that would happen in a more rural area, the training.
The trains will show up next to somebody's house and then.
Uh, the next one is the Oyster River Market. Um, this is ten seventy nine Western Post Road. Uh, they had a request, so they were originally approved, sorry, this paper's really hard to read. To maintain the maaters building by selling prepackaged food, drinks, on-site baked goods, non-perishable decorative pieces and apparel uh, and have a neighborhood market, that was the original Oyster River Market, the properties on the market. Uh, these folks would like to put in a coffee shop, their idea is to serve coffee, pastry and sandwiches. This would be for customers to come to the counter and place their order, no waiters or waitresses. Inside, there would be three to four small tables with patrons to sit. Uh, the inside of the building is old and tired, buyer would put in new counters and counter traps and replace the old displays with new glass displays. The porch under the overhang, there would be small tables on either side of the door as you walk out of the building. There would be two to three Adirondack chairs or, and or two to three picnic tables. The bathroom is not ADA compliant and will need to get built up. So um, the question from the real estate agent is, is this a different use from the retail use that was there? Sounds.
Sounds similar to me. Sounds the same, outside seating might be different.
But then there's indoor seating.
You didn't have it before?
So the original proposal was for a small farmer's market, no indoor seating.
Farmer's market was it, it originated from selling goods that came from a farm to some extent. Pies came from apples and stuff that was grown on a farm. So it, it, a farm stand got to include baked goods.
Right.
Made from farm products. Uh, when you take away anything to do with the farm, meaning something that's locally grown, coffee and whatever's grown in other parts of the world, but not Connecticut, doesn't make it a farm stand. I think it's a complete change.
But that was said, the market wouldn't.
So the, this was the original Oyster River Market, so they, it was, I know initially they wanted to sell um, they had a hard time finding local farm produce to sell because we actually do have others, like the farmer's market, people didn't want to compete when they were bringing in goods to town and other. So they had some difficulty getting, without growing their own, finding someone that would distribute it so that they could have the farm market and then they had baked goods and some prepackaged goods. I haven't been there in a while, they may have, I don't remember any seating in there.
No, no.
Well, it's on, it's on them, you know, they had pies.
Some pies, a key lime pie side or something.
Yeah, the key lime pies are great.
So this is really, I mean, it sounds like a coffee shop to me.
It does to me too, and then I'd be worried about parking, yeah. So people would be lingering around and sitting on the Adir, Adirondack chairs, looking at the Oyster River.
So is this retail to retailers or more retail to food and beverage, I guess?
I don't think it's retail food to beverage.
I agree.
Yeah. I think it's an answer there.
Do you want to do that?
Oh, yeah, I might as well do this one. So, um, this one, we're gonna put to the next meeting, I asked them to come in. Um, so thirty five research parkway, I remember we went through all the permitting for Blue Sky.
Blue Sky.
Oh, yeah. Uh, and that was the whole major carbon race to go through and compress and, and send fragilities back to the grounds, back into the ground in the Midwest. So they ended up, they went through all the permits with us and deep shut them down because they weren't allowed to do what they were doing by the state, so they moved out of state. Oh, so, um, this property, this was one of the Stark properties, there was the pathway lighting. Uh, and Mr. Stark passed away. Uh, this is, I believe the daughter Jill and her husband, they came in looking for ideas for, they really are desperate to get this property rented. Um, so they came in and said, well, what we would like to do is store boats, recreational vehicles and cars in the building. So the properties located in the industrial zone are other storage areas, which apparently now we have a little bit of an issue because apparently Cube Smart is renting space for boats and recreational vehicles. Um, and remember we went through and did the regulation change, some made in the past three to five years that that was about marine vehicle, marine vehicles and those could only be within X amount of feet. They had to be in the marine industrial of the Connecticut River. So it doesn't appear to me that this use is allowed. Um, so there, there was a little bit of confusion and the thought was, they sent a letter to me to come to this commission to request a variance, but really what they're looking for is they're looking to see if you would entertain the idea of taking the industrial zone for the storage of boats and RVs. But this would be inside the building.
Well, Cube Smart stores them outside.
That's a zoning violation, I realized that.
And then there were boats and cars stored in the building that was down um, we're gonna have to Cube Smart next to it. Down the corner and very far in on the left. They used to store boats and RVs and things in there. And advertise it. I also believed in that same building, different section, the carts and more store their golf carts that they sell over on.
So, so the difference, the difference becomes.
So this is what my point is.
The marine store.
There, there storage going on in that general, general area.
But I suspect the storage, the permits for the storage like Cube Smart, Bob.
Uh.
Yeah, what?
Cube Smart. Remember we did the permits for the Cube Smart and those storage areas? Those storage areas did not allow for vehicles, RVs or boats, correct?
They didn't allow.
You just stored boats?
Um, the only ones that would store boats were those that had extra open air property outside their building space. So the ones you can see from ninety five, that like, that like at the end of Mill Rock Road.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oldness app, there's storage areas on that industrial road, research parkway, Mill Rock Road to the end where Apple, Apple, where the, where the ping pong place wanted to go, you know? There, there are some, there's storage. There are some storage spaces, Cube Smart, that had buildings and boats. But not the one on Schoolhouse, not the one at one sixty six and not, um, there was the other one.
So, so the question goes back to, remember you, the Blue Sky property?
Yeah. Is it the past that you ever?
They, they moved out. And this is to move, these folks want to store boats and recreational vehicles. But we created a marine vehicle establishment for the storage of boats and we don't allow. So I, I think that the Cube Smart and that, I forget the guy who started those originally, maybe that was before these regulations.
Right, it was, yes.
So the question is, would the zoning commission entertain a text amendment to store? A text amendment to store boats and RVs. In the industrial zone.
In the, in the industrial zone, it seemed to me that we did allow storage of trailers.
But then we made section fifty-three.
Right.
And then he spelled out marine vehicle establishment, so you look at V four. It says that we allow for marine vehicle establishments, but when you go under the special standard of fifty-three, that's why it's not allowed. So the regulation now wouldn't allow it on Research Parkway because. It's not within five thousand feet of the main navigable channel of the Connecticut River.
Right, the object was keep the boats near the water, right?
So the question is, would we consider amending the regulations to allow boats in the industrial zones?
I mean, the industrial zone is north of railroad tracks across from the railroad station. Donnelly property, you know, the high school.
Research Parkway.
And uh, by Blade View.
Right.
Yep.
So it would be allowed up by Blade View. Because it's probably within a hundred feet or. Five thousand feet of the main navigable channel. So the question is, if it's not, would, would we want to take? Research Parkway and other industrial properties such as Donnelly's. And the industrial zone and open it up for boat and RV storage.
I, I, I would say no. Instinct says no, but why, alright, so industrial zone property was historically reserved for. Industries that required equipment and stuff which added to the town's taxable. Property list. Storage of boats doesn't do that. So my guess is that the EGC would think less highly of boat storage than they do of. A machine shop or something that has capital equipment indoors. That's taxed by the town. Um. Boat storage, are we out of boat storage, I mean. We're never out of, 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 they have empty office space all over and retail space. And yet people want to build more of each. If we're, if we're out of boat storage and there's a need for more boat storage, then maybe, maybe, but if we're not out of. If all our boat storage spaces are not used. Do we need more boat storage space? From this. Aspect of. New land use in different areas of town where it was previously excluded and or. Taxable. Capital goods for the town.
No, but you get somebody with an empty building and it's in an industrial area.
So, but the thing is, this is. There's other uses in the industrial zone, this is just the property owner's kind of fix of something he can get in there easy to generate revenue. But he doesn't have a tenant, not that I sympathize with him not having a tenant.
You can appreciate that, but we're not out of boat storage space in the town, both there.
But it could be contractor's storage, it could be a number of different uses. In the industry.
Could just change that other area. Contractor storage. I, I, I agree with Bob.
It just doesn't seem to me to be the best use of industrial property that's not allowed today to open it up for that. For our highly supposedly high value industrial property to be used for seasonal storage. Cause realistically, it's a seasonal use.
Even if it's indoor only, just kind of throwing the idea out there, cause I know there's. There's actually a in-demand business for the storage, um, pretty much beautiful buildings. Um, that are heated. And very well decorated for the high-end storage of cars, so you have a fancy car, you can't, you don't have a garage. You have a two hundred thousand dollar car, you can kind of park it in that showroom, I guess they do it for boats.
They do it for boats too, but it's also a very high-end part of the market, which is a smaller percentage.
Essex Island Marina has, Essex Boatworms has a big red building, they store boats in it. Is this a building to store boats or is this outdoor storage?
It would be a building. This proposal is indoor right now.
It would. Mitigate, it would mitigate. It's indoor storage that would overflow potentially into the parking lot.
I was.
Is that kind of where we're?
Just last week at Longbow Key in Florida, they have, they have, they have big, big buildings with shelves which hold fourteen, sixteen foot. Boats with outboard motors, those are the ones I saw. There is an automated robot that goes up and down the aisle to remove the boat from the shelf. To deliver it to the wat- to the thing that's gonna put it in the water. And so that's where technology is taking us. That would seem to me to fit more within a certain distance of navigable water. Than putting boat storage or large things, storage. In industrial, non-water, not, not near water.
My problem, my problem with all that is that, there's, there's nobody building machine shops.
It's a building that.
There's nobody building machine shops.
But, but we had, we, we had somebody come into town called Blue Sky that had a. Concept that worked in that building, stayed panicked and shut them down. For whatever reason, but, so there was other business potential out there rather than a machine shop.
That could be in Donnelly's too, there's nobody want, trying to get in there except the landscapers.
Donnelly's is full.
It's full.
It's uh, the ocean scene, that's their warehouse.
Yeah, warehouse after two or three years.
I'm just saying that if, if there's, in the industrial areas, there's people with properties that are empty. And they're looking for somebody to pay the rent.
Right, so I guess the thing is.
Indoors, I'm not talking about a yard full of.
But if we, then we'd have to change the regulation, which would open it up for new construction and more than in the industrials.
But do they want to do boats and cars or just boats?
Boats, RVs, cars.
And. The regulation we have right now is, makes exceptions for boats.
It used to the old permits. So the old thing, so we permitted, I don't know, twenty-five years ago, it may have allowed for that. But we don't, it's no longer allowed, all of those uses went closer to the marinas.
But only boats were taken out.
Like, right now, could they store cars and RVs and things like that inside or all of it was taken out? I don't think they, they couldn't store boats and RVs, I mean, they couldn't store cars and RVs, it would be just storage. We don't allow for car storage.
Do we allow for storage of other things in industrial zone?
So, so we have, these are like self-storage, right, so you go in there.
We allow for self-storage, right, so like, why do we care if it's a car or a bo- or somebody's living room? I mean, maybe with the boats, it's different because they have to be near, it makes sense for them to be near the marine, but it's, I'm just. Saying, why, why do we care?
What about RVs, I guess, what are we getting into the, I'm, I'm just kind of. I'm, I'm throwing the. Question out.
You got a guy down the street, it's the Mystic Market, who's got a yard full of. Boots.
He has a permit, yeah. No, he went, so this is the thing, there were certain things that were permitted years ago. Probably twenty-five years ago, I'm not trying to date myself, but.
That's right.
That's why I bounce off of Bob, Bob and I go back to the old.
If it's indoors and you're storing something, doesn't matter what it is. To become warehousing. It's a warehouse full of stuff. Does it really matter what the stuff is?
Oh, that, that's what Casey's saying, so can you store your car in your living, in your living room in your storage unit? Your small car, very small smart car with your living room.
Freight or materials, trucking terminal or business. Commercial storage. It's inside the building, it's stor- it's being stored in the building. The only thing that boats. Both call on trailers and they're towed by big things and they have to fit down the street, Research Parkway's not the best street in the world, but.
But I, I mean, the other thing too is it wouldn't, so say you did go with that interpretation, they still have to come back to the commission. Because they went from a biochar facility. Now to. A, a storage facility.
But it, yeah, they would have to come with a text, text amendment request. For us to review.
Well, even if it was allowed, they'd still have to come to the commission for this thing, so they still need to, if, if the board was to say, okay, you can start, you know. Store your mini car in your living room in a self-storage unit or contractor's storage unit or warehousing unit. They still would have to come to the commission anyway to change from the biochar. Facility they were, they would have to go that.
Well, you can think one other thing, sorry, I wanted to throw a wrench in it, but. If we do let people like self-store cars, we run the risk that people start working on their cars in the units. And does that present like? In environmental safety issue, right, and it's not.
Not allowed, which is never known before you do it.
Right. Exactly.
I, I, I can, I can tell you from. Operating Marina for a number of years, exactly what we're doing, if you can. Until they get caught.
So. Brenda, do you have anything? Patiently listening, I'm just trying to get a consensus of what everybody's thinking there.
I agree with the proximity to the water with the boats makes sense, you know, and. The restriction, keeping it that way seems more logical.
And I agree with what Bob said, leaving industrial. Um, buildings reserved for industries so we can appreciate the taxes. But maybe. So, so am I hearing that?
If it's all in the building, it seems to me that industrial would allow it. As soon as it's for sales and there's anything stored outside. Subject to the twenty-five percent of the lot area. Or outdoor storage in the industrial zone. It's all inside the building and it's not sales-related, warehousing. If they have a showroom and they're selling, selling it, then it's not industrial, then it's retail.
But it would not allow for boats.
Doesn't matter, if you're warehousing stuff, you can't sell it out of the warehouse at retail.
Right, but if we have a regulation, it says storing of boats can go on the other side of town within the. Five thousand feet of the navigable channel of the water.
You can store, you can store everything in there but a boat right now.
That, that's what I'm saying, that's what I think.
Right? That's what you're saying.
Storing the boat was, in my mind, a accessory to a boat, a place that sells boats. They sell boats and they store boats. Sort of an accessory use. If you put boats in a building as a warehouse. And you're not selling them in that retail, there is no accessory to that, it's just storing stuff in a building. You can't sell it, that's retail, you're just storing it.
So then it doesn't work for, then it conflicts with marine vehicle.
No, it's not, because it doesn't, that's my frustration is it doesn't specifically say. That a marine vehicle establishment is, is retail. It was intended to mean that, but it doesn't say retail.
I don't think it was, because. If I remember correctly, we talked about boat storage and we didn't want to. Have boat storage all the way up and down Route Lot One, like when you cross the, what, the border and onto. There's boats everywhere all the way up to the road. And marine vehicle establishment.
We're going to talk about display.
Marine vehicle establishment. Marine vehicle establishment, establishment for sale, repair, manufacturing, storage. For service to motorized or non-motorized, both personal watercraft, marine trailers, equipment and any.
That's the definition.
That's the definition. The word service. But a marine vehicle establishment. Is defined also to be the storage of boats, it doesn't say it's accessory or anything like that.
That we're allowed storage of boats, recreational vehicles and cars. In our twenty-five thousand square foot first floor. Plus.
That doesn't. Alright, I. I say no, marine, marine vehicle establishments are within five thousand feet of something. And storing boats in industrial outside of that is.
What about RVs being cars? What about RVs?
RVs, that, those are the, don't fall in the other vehicles, weird. Get it in here?
Who was a camper? Kind of getting warehousing. Then we're there, this is. Mark, do you need a place for your boat, John, do you need a place for your boat, everybody goes in and then everybody's gonna end up working on their boat or their car. Or their RV, it's not as though it's Joe's RV center that needs extra space and needs to cram fifty RVs in, into a. Storage facility for future sale.
Will they have like individual, like how a self-storage would, it'll just be like they bring it there and then.
I guess, does it matter?
Well, I'm just wondering in the sense of. Like self-storage, I think of like you have your unit that you have access to and it's a lot easier to like go in there and. Work on stuff that you're not supposed to work on and things like that, or is it like, they're gonna meet you and then they're gonna like. Valet your vehicle, so to speak, you know what I mean, and like, then you're not as likely to, then they have more control over what's happening.
But, but I guess the thing is, say, say it's one giant room or one little unit.
Right.
You could still go in to your boat and work on your boat in there, even if you're not supposed to work on your boat in there, or your car, your RV, I don't think you're gonna stay. Maybe you won't be able to move it.
Alright, so here.
Yeah.
The frustrating part is forty-one point one point three in industrial high district. Is permitted uses. And the exact same words are used in forty-one point three point three on the backside of the same page as prohibited uses.
That was when we had.
So we have to pick one of those and get rid of it and keep the other one. Right, so after we get that. Right, so after we get that, after we fix that.
Bob, forty-one point what, three?
Forty-one point one point.
Forty-one point one point three. Warehousing wholesale business and building contractor business or storage yard. Forty-one point three point three, warehousing or wholesale businesses, building contractor business or storage.
We already fixed it, it's reserved now. It's reserved. We fixed it, the last round of rate changes.
So the hard copy that I got.
Alright, we'll have to get it for you, so.
You took.
Mine says reserved.
Oh, okay, alright, so. It's reserved and prohibited and it's allowed, ah, man, I thought it was gonna go the other way.
So what does that mean, reserved? It means we removed it.
Nothing there. So this is now reserved. Alright, here, for RV storage, let's back up one, Greg, forty-one point three point two. Store or other building or structure where goods are sold or services rendered primarily at retail. Do you own an RV and you wanna get it stored somewhere, you're using a retail service. Unlike you own a fleet of RVs and you wanna get them stored somewhere, that may not be retail. But one by one, that's retail, service. And that's still prohibited.
So is the answer. That this use is not allowed, we confirm the use is not allowed. And that you don't really seem receptive to this regulation change, that's kind of what I'm hearing.
I think. I'm hearing the same thing too.
I just need to guide this person on what to do.
Right, we're not receptive to the regulation change.
Retail is not allowed in the industrial district, except for all of the exceptions that we've built up over time. Retail services. Service rendered primarily at retail. Is I have a service, if an individual comes in to, to purchase my service, that's retail. Retail is not allowed in the industrial district.
Yes, that's my answer.
That's your answer?
And I'll double check on the forty-one point three point three.
Oh, that's right.
You have it reserved? It happened, there's so many swaps, yeah, all of a sudden. For some reason, my section fifty-three, it got printed, copied, so every other page is. Upside down and I keep needing to change it, like, yeah, I have to do this, so then I come to a meeting and I'm like. I think that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.